Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for April the 5th. All of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for today's meeting is to hear a presentation, excuse me, and provide direction on the five-year capital improvement program focusing on utilities. Don't have soda pop for breakfast, or that will happen to you on television. We invite Beth Hunning and Scott Butler to come forward for this first-agend item. Beth and Scott, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and council. We appreciate the opportunity to review the proposed five-year CIP with you. Today, we'll be focusing on the utility side of the CIP. That'll include projects in our Water Resources and Energy Resources Departments, and then we'll be back on April 26th to highlight the general government side of the CIP, including parks, transportation, as well as public safety. As far as what we'll be discussing today, I'm going to provide an overview of how the capital improvement program has developed. We'll discuss CIP funding for utility projects. We also have some slides regarding the 2014 utility bond projects, and then Beth will highlight the status of some of our significant projects on the utility side. As far as the development of the capital improvement program, it's a multi-year plan for the city's infrastructure. There's a lot of steps that go into developing the plan, everything from project concepts through scoping, design, and construction. So it encompasses several years in order to see a project completed. Projects are identified through several means, including staff analysis, particularly with utilities where they focus on demand and also system reliability to make sure that the infrastructure can continue to deliver service. There's also contractual obligations that we meet for services that we share with other regional partners, and then also council direction through strategic initiatives and other means. The city council approves the first year of the funding of the CIP during the annual budget process, and then during the fiscal year, as projects move through the process of design and construction, those contracts are brought back for your consideration and As far as the project types that are in the CIP, we classify them as two primary means, either they're funded or they're planned. Funded means that they have an identified funding source set aside for them. If they're planned, it means that there is a need to complete them, but yet the funding is still being discussed. The example I would give is our 91st Avenue wastewater treatment facility that we share with partners in Phoenix. It's managed by Phoenix, and we have contractual requirements for the capital improvements that are completed at that facility. Some of those are funded today as part of the 2014 bond authorization, and some of them are requirements that are in future years that we will need to fund through a source that's not identified at this time. Specifically for our utility areas, the two primary means that we fund projects, local revenues, that means cash. There are some projects that it makes more sense for us, it's more cost-effective for us to use cash to pay for those things, as opposed to long-term financing. Our other means to finance projects is to use utility revenue bonds, and then the debt service is paid on those bonds through city utility operations. Another component of the CIP involves the ongoing operations and maintenance in order to maintain these projects. On the utility side, there isn't a great deal of operations and maintenance. However, we currently have two plants that are under construction, the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, as well as the expansion at the Greenfield Wastewater Reclamation Plant. Both of those plants require significant operations and maintenance, and in particular, from a planning perspective, for the Signal Butte Plant, that plant will come online in a couple of months, and the staff, in order to operate that plant, they actually were brought on over the last couple of fiscal years to make sure that their training is up to date, so that when the plant comes online, it's a seamless transition.
So, good morning, Mayor and council. I'm going to talk a little bit about the status of our bond projects and how the work is going and where we are with the funding. In 2014, we were blessed with a positive bond election for our utilities departments for water resources and energy resources in water, wastewater, natural gas, and electric. This table just, it's a lot of numbers, but these were the four categories for the projects that we went out to the public with. We got 315.7 million in water, 178.2 in wastewater, 59 in natural gas, and 27 in electric in that bond election. The projects in water were distributed like this table shows you and broken down. You'll see the largest category of the funding is in customer demand in southeast Mesa, and that's primarily because of several major projects that we needed to do in this cycle, one of which is the Signal Butte Water Plant located at Signal Butte and Elliott, which we hope to turn the tap on next month to provide water to the southeast portion of the city. And then the pipelines that go to feed it and take water away from it on Elliott Road and one out to the Raw Water Canal. In addition, we had two large pipelines that needed to be built in West Mesa to take water from our existing Val Vista Water Plant down into the zones in West Mesa. Those projects will all be wrapping up here this summer and will be complete, and they represent over 60% of the water bond program as it was envisioned and voted on in 2014. These are just the projects, and a picture of the projects. You can see the new Signal Butte Water Plant down in the corner. This is from last month. The water projects are distributed all over the valley. The remainder of the 40% of the projects are pretty much distributed all over the city and different parts of the city under various statuses of construction. The wastewater program, the 178.2 million, you can see the obligations and the categories we have there in the lifecycle replacement, the contractual obligations that Scott talked about, customer demand. Again, if you look at the way the numbers distributed for the projects, the largest portion of the wastewater bonds was for customer demand in southeast Mesa, and that is because of one major plant. It's a joint project. We own and operate this plant in conjunction with the town of Queen Creek and the town of Gilbert as our partners. We are in the process of expanding the plant now and just started the next construction project. It represents 125 million of the bond program as it was envisioned in 2014, which is about 70% of the total bonds that we had available. We hope to open that next expansion in the fall of 2020. These large projects take time. They're not something we can do off the shelf, and they take a period of years to develop and build, and they have to be in place before the demand exists. You might be able to build a house and not complete the road in front of it, but you can't build a house and not have water and sewer service. These major facilities are built in advance of the need. These are some of the other wastewater projects we have going. We have some at the southeast wastewater reclamation facility that you can see up there and the northwest water reclamation facility. Those facilities are aging. Like me, they're getting to a point where some of the infrastructure needs some help. So, we are working very hard to do replacement projects at those treatment plants, and as well as pipelines throughout the city, we have numerous pipelines in our systems, particularly in the mid-to-western portions of the city that are aging and reaching 50 years plus in our systems. Our electric, Mesa is unique in many ways, and one of them is in our infrastructure, and one of them is that we have an electric and gas utility, which the other cities in the valley do not have. So it makes us a little bit different than the other cities, so you see that we carry bond debt for those utilities as well. The electric system was in the program for about $27 million. Now, I'm going to kind of put this map in perspective, because when I first showed this, the city manager goes, "Wow, look how big the service area is." It's really only five and a half square miles, but we blew it up here a little bit. Yeah, he did. You should have seen him. It was, "Wow." Not really. But it's five and a half square miles of basically the core downtown area of Mesa. You can see the projects we have going on in the electric service area in this map. Natural gas is, again, very different in what we do. We had $59 million in it. We can see much of it is for customer demand and new growth in new areas of the city, and that's for two reasons. When you look at the service areas of our natural gas system, we have the Mesa area in natural gas. This map, if you put it in perspective, is 90 square miles compared to the prior map that was five and a half square miles, and this represents over 42,000 customers in the city of Mesa. But it's not all of our natural gas system. This map looks quite small, but this is 236 square miles of service area, so roughly two and a half times what we have in Mesa today. It's the Magma Service Area in the southeast part of the valley. Conversely, this service area right now has only about 19,000 customers, but is growing, and we have a lot of demand for new services in this area. So, natural gas and electric are not, they're not projects that drive other projects. Streets projects, water and sewer drive other projects. If we're in doing a street or redoing a street, we generally replace the utilities at that time. We do joint trench water and natural gas in the same trench, so if we're replacing water, we're typically replacing natural gas. And then electric, a lot of their program is for new customers and customer demands, and that's true of the natural gas system as well. And with that, we will continue in the future to have needs in these same categories, same areas. Utilities are ongoing. They go to infinity. We are looking right now at the projects we have completing with the bond program we have in about 2020, so that's what the future looks like for the utilities. We'll continue to need to do lifecycle replacement. We'll continue to meet new demands. Mesa is, I once heard somebody say it's a tale of two cities where you have a portion of the city that's more mature, and it's aging, and we have an all-new portion of the city that's developing very rapidly, as you know. So those demands will continue to be part of the needs for these systems as we go forward.
Mayor and council, just to highlight, this is the proposed CIP for utilities. It'll be back on May 21st for your consideration for adoption. Also included in your packets was a project summary list that contains all of the proposed utility projects for your review at this time, if you have any questions for us.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Everybody always hates when they start doing the natural gas side.
I may need to call Frank up for backup.
Well, one of my questions on the natural gas side is the joint with water. Always get nervous when we have pressure with pressure, and then especially if you have a water line failure, because it'll erode the dirt and collapse the pavement or the dirt above, which will end up falling in on your gas line. Have we had issues where we've had ground settlement due to a water line break? Because I know we've had some water line breaks over the last year. Have we had any issues with joint trench where they've collapsed on our gas lines?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, not that I'm aware of. I'm going to ask Jake. Are you aware of any, Jake? I'm not aware of any that we've had. We are pretty proactive in trying to replace those old mains, and I know, as you know, our gas system is subject to many regulatory requirements as well.
Jake? Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, we do, from time to time, have a water main break. 90% of where our water lines are in the older parts of Mesa and some of the newer stuff. We do have an occasion where we may impact the gas lines, but we work well with the Energy Department in conjunction with that. When that does happen, the first priority is to isolate the gas main, and then we'll get in and do our work afterwards. Typically, the way it is set up in our trench detail is the gas is either a foot above or a foot off to the side, and our locator's doing a very effective job of letting us know where it's at. And 90% of our, we've got a lot of younger kids nowadays coming up, but some of the old timers are still around. We're familiar with the systems and where they're at, and so we do take precaution when this does happen.
Okay. That was my only question on that. And then, on the septic to sewer, did we utilize very many of the funds? I know that we had, like, a couple of years ago, we had funds set aside for the septic to sewer. Did we see a large use of those funds for replacements?
Councilmember Thompson, Mayor, yes, we have. We had some dollars set aside for some projects. We did a project over there off of Southern Avenue, which is Lynn Ray Square, where we went out and put a significant amount of dollars into that system and got them off of the septic sewer and into the city system. We had another project that came to us from some residents out there on Palm Lane in Val Vista. I think it was about seven or eight homes that they'd built these houses years ago, and so their septic systems were failing, so we met with them. Beth's staff went out and put a project together. It was a little smaller project, but that went very well. We've got about nine people that went off of septic prior to their failure and are now connected to the city system.
Do we still have funds available for that?
We've got some funds available, so when we use them wherever we can. We do have some projects that are coming up right now. We're out in the east Mesa area where we're doing water and gas line replacements. We're also doing the sewer in that area as too, and we're using some of those funds.
Awesome. Okay. Are we going to do another marketing campaign or anything to advertise the septic to sewer?
I believe as the funds come available, we'll start the campaign.
Exactly.
So if we came back on another bond election, that would be something we would do.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Beth. I didn't hear mention about the downtown cooling system. How's that infrastructure? Is it maxed out? I mean, is there any, what's the plan with that?
Well, my memory is, we have room for another chiller in the system. It's not maxed out, but I know that, I guess we'd have to get facilities up to talk a little bit about the current status of the system.
Yeah, Mayor and council, we've looked at that. The cost to even add to and extend the system, we've gone through the numbers. There's not an economic reason right now probably to extend it beyond what we have in our city buildings, and so we need, we're still studying that, but right now, the cost expense to expand the capacity is economically not penciling out for us at this point. But it's something we can look at, so that's kind of our challenge right now, so.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Whitaker?
On Slide 5, you guys talk about planned projects and a need to complete within a five-year period. Within the utilities, is there, like, years that you're tracking the end of life for certain items that are going to need large amounts of capital, and what percentage of those are actually funded versus unfunded? Or like, are you planning for the long-term expiration of some of these things that are going to need a significant amount of money beyond the five-year period?
Yeah, yes. Councilmember Whitaker, our utilities department has an asset management program, a very robust asset management plan, and they monitor and watch the years and the dates on everything, including the pumps at the treatment plant to the pipes in the ground. And there are years that they're looking at that. I know Water actually has a graph that shows you, based on their pipes, the particular ages of their pipes, how many of them fall in like the 30 to 40 years, 40 to 50, 50 to six, and they monitor those. And then they also look at leak rate, where they get the most leaks, and they combine those two to establish where their next projects are for replacement of those pipes. You'll see us out, right now, we're doing some quarter-section replacement, what we call quarter-section replacement projects right now for water and gas. There's three of them under construction right now. I can give you the locations if you want them, but every year, we do a certain number of those that replace those facilities as they age out.
Yeah, I'm just more concerned over, like, let's say, the next 30 years. Is there a chart that you guys could provide me with at some point in the future that show the amount of capital cost that's required over each year and the percentage of that that is currently funded, or if we're allocating funds from the budget to actually fund some of those items? Or what is the plan when those items come and have to be replaced?
So, Mayor, council, we don't, we only have funded what you see in the five-year CIP and what's funded by bonds. So there's nothing, there's no funding or budget. We have a, you know, five-year forecast. Only thing we'll have after that, there's nothing funded of a project that needs to be completed in 10 years, 20 years from now. We don't, that's why the, typically, we don't go out for bonds about, we do it about every five years or so. So the next opportunity for us to identify funding, we come in 2020?
2020.
And so, we will identify the needs, which we can provide to you, which is the same, what Beth just talked about. We have, they identified infrastructure, its age, and anticipated replacement, but there's no funding other, well, the funding that would be identified would come through bonds, and so what we do is identify that long-term kind of lifecycle of the infrastructure so we can kind of see what's ahead of us. But then, we don't, we come each, every five years to council for the actual funding source for that. So the funding is only identified in a five-year window, just like we did in 2014. That's where you had, you know, it was one of the largest ones we did, almost $600 million. Of course, it had two major plants in it. Typically, we're replacing pipe, but, so that's what you'll see in 2020. We'll come to council with the next five-year CIP. We'll show you what we think our needs are. I guess we can go out, as far as you want, with our asset management and showing, because we've got pipe that's 30, 50 years old, so we know that's the areas where we focus on our replacement program first. But we don't have something that's 10 years out. The assumption is, at some point in the future, there will be a future bond package that will fund that. But we only come to council or come to the public about every five, this time, six years. We're stretching out to six years for this next round.
I guess I just don't want to get caught with any huge surprises outside of just a short window of five years. Like, if there's a massive, you know, $600 million project that needs to be done in years six.
Yeah, typically, it would be, well, that's what, so that's what happened in 2014. We had talked to council that it had been, I think, prior to that, Greenfield was 2015, 20, or not, 2006, 2005?
2006 and 2010.
Yeah. So, that's, we can identify those expansion needs in the plants, because those are the big chunks, and then we can lay out kind of what we think our needs are for replacing the piping across the city. The other big challenge we have, that you see in the pressure in the enterprise fund, are these big plants. I mean, if we went out and got the 500, almost $600 million, that has to get paid for, and so to accommodate not only replacing the old infrastructure, but keeping up with the new demand, we're kind of facing both of those right now. We're facing the aging of infrastructure and the older part of the community that we are trying to keep up with, but at the same time, we're running as fast as we can to keep up with the new demand in parts of our city, not only on the residential side, but on the industrial side, and so, but that it affects the rates. We've lost, we've lost the ability, we used to have a more efficient way to get impact fees from new development that would help offset a lot of that cost, that would offset the debt directly. That's been eliminated, pretty much, to the effect, or taken away from us. So today, much of that cost is related to the new infrastructure that we see, and we will, we anticipate we're going to have to expand Signal Butte again. We'll have to expand Greenfield again sometime in the future. So we see, and we can kind of tell you what that looks like, but unfortunately, because the way the legislature has removed that from us, all those costs now have to be applied across the entire city. It used to be that we were able to capture a portion of that from new development, but we no longer can do that.
What about in southeast Mesa, how we have the special taxing district? I can't think of the name of it.
Yeah.
The CFDs.
Community Facility District.
Something that we've considered? Is that just like, that's not a way?
Well, it's not for us. That's for the developer. Developer receives those funds to pay off the infrastructure they've put in, and that's typically the streets.
Streets, water, sewer.
Some of the sewer water. But any other development typically would pay for that. They would just embed that in the cost of the land. This methodology becomes a special tax assessment, is that a better word?
Assessment.
Assessment on the properties, which is much, much significant, it's three times as much as what the city has across the whole city.
Okay. Yeah, I guess just in summary, if you guys could provide me with, as far as a vision as you have, if you could provide me with a chart of the lifecycle and the capital costs that are anticipated over those years, I would appreciate that.
And Councilmember Whitaker, maybe just to highlight a specific example with the Signal Butte Plant. The first time that we documented the need for a plant on the east side of Mesa was back in 2001, and then, of course, over time, as we, as the Water Resources Department and Engineering looked at demand and service requirements out there and reliability, then 2014, the cost effectiveness to build the plant was right, and so now we have the plant coming on to service in a couple of months.
Your CIP today is how far toward?
So the CIP that O&amp;B coordinates, we monitor 10 years, and then per charter requirement is when we bring five years for council consideration, but we look at 10 years. You can imagine that after the first few years, it can get a little, with the words "foggy," as far as what specific things will be done over time, but the utility areas both look at their pipes, they, you know, whether it's cameras in the pipes to make sure that they're reliable and things like that, to make sure that when the projects come, when the timing is right, that the project needs to be completed.
And I will also point out that both water and wastewater have utility master plans that take them through build-out, looking at projections of demand through build-out as well. So they have maps that show where we need to build major pipelines, major transmission mains, and treatment facilities.
Yeah, I trust that you guys have that all planned out. I'm more just concerned on the financial side, what that unfunded piece looks like so that we can anticipate for those costs.
Councilmember Carl, a lot of those projects are in that project summary, at least for the five-year period. If any phase of them starts within the five-year period, so you'll see that a proposed 2020 utility bond, what that, what those projects would look like are included in that summary, but we can certainly provide that additional information for you.
Great. Thank you.
Just to continue that line for a minute, I think some of the utility bond authorizations we got in 2014 can be used for additional expansion of the facilities that are being constructed right now. Is that correct, or do we need to go back to the voters to expand those facilities?
So, Mayor, the 2014 included the expansion of the Greenfield Water, Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is happening. It included the construction of the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, which will be opening in May?
May, May.
May, end of May, okay.
Maybe the last day.
So, those were included in that, as well as other pipe. Beyond that, any additional expansion, and we have the capacity to expand Signal Butte and Greenfield also at some point?
Yes, actually, by the time we're done with this expansion, we're just over 50% of the site build-out.
So we, at some point, and part of the analysis that we have to sit down and do every year is determine when that next addition will take place. But it was, we only, in the 2014, just included the current phases of what's being completed at Signal Butte and Greenfield today. Any additional expansions of either one of those plants would be a subsequent bond election.
Okay. That answers my question, but I think I've heard that the industrial development in southeast Mesa is moving at such a rapid pace that we might, there's already some discussion of, hey, we're, yeah, we're bringing on a lot more capacity, but there's demand for even additional capacity. So I guess I was hoping that there was some bonding that was already authorized for some of that additional expansion, but it's, what you're telling me is there's not. Okay.
And I think Water is projecting moving, putting the Signal Butte design starting in 2021 for the next expansion.
Okay. Thank you. Council, additional questions? Thank you very much. Great presentation. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is to hear a presentation and provide direction on department budgets and utility rate recommendations for water resources, environmental management, energy resources, and the Economic Investment Fund. Welcome Candace and her crew again. Are we starting with, we're starting with water, I think, aren't we?
Yep. Brian Richel with Office of Management and Budget. Going to, there we go. And kind of give you, and I'm here, I'll kind of give you an overview in the way we kind of set this up, since it's three departments in one presentation. I'll give the, kind of the beginning intro, and then we'll have each individual department come up and give their presentation of their budget, and then at the end, then Candace will come up and we'll give the overview financial of the enterprise fund. So bear with us while we play musical chairs here. So with the, as I mentioned, the enterprise operations, the city looks at it as a whole, as one fund, but each department, each utility is operated as a separate business center. When we look at the enterprise fund, we look at the overall fund and the reserve balance, the ending reserve balance, we, for our financial policy of the city. It needs to be no less than 8% to 10% throughout the forecast period, and the forecast period is usually around five years. With that, to keep that, the reserve balance, we smooth With that, to keep that, the reserve balance, we smooth the rate adjustments year to year. So there's no, we try not to do any rate spikes, either down or up. And then with the reserve balance, we use to phase in, it helps to phase in new programs or in change in operations that we have. So with that, we will all hand it over to Jake for Water Resources Department.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Jake West, Water Resources Department Director. With, I have with me today Deputy Director Seth Weld. We're here to discuss the Water Resources Department and about our accomplishments and the things that we're doing in water resources. So City of Mesa has provided safe, reliable, and economical and environmentally responsible water services to the citizens of Mesa for over a century. We currently have about 149,000 water connections. We use the term connections because a connection is actually a meter point that may be an apartment complex where there are more citizens, excuse me, and 125,000 wastewater connections in our systems. Some of our accomplishments this past year is that we started a, excuse me, we started a marketing campaign for our water ourselves. We got a, we call it our, get to know your H2O, and we have a water bar. We set this system up, it's going to be there at Celebrate Mesa, we have it at Celebrate Freedom. We've actually had a couple of departments reach out to us when they're having some conferences or whatever, where we bring in jugs of Mesa water that is then cooled, and then we serve that to our customers and our residents, rather than the use of encouraging, discouraging the use of bottled water, where we can treat the water. We're actually really just marketing the value of City Mesa's water. And that's been, that was, I received a copper, a copper award for merit for the water bar. We also got another award from the Public Relations Society of America with regards to our Consumer Confidence Report. That report used to just kind of be just a little folder that would talk about all the things that we do in water, how we treat it, and all the things that go into producing high-quality water. What we've done now is kind of fluffed it up a little bit, and we've got, we can actually do it now. We can deliver it not only to our residents by address, we have it online for anybody. And anytime anybody calls or has a question, whether it's the media or just a resident about the quality of our water, we can provide that document to them. We also have, we're very proud of our lab supervisor, Matt Rexing. He's been with the city for 30-plus years, and he received a national honor merit award from the AWWA. And what we've started doing recently with our business development coordinator and Department PIO Kathy McDonald, she's been working with Mesa Public Schools. And we've sent out a bunch of student workbooks to talk, to teach kids about the value of water and what goes into doing water. And these are targeted to K through three and four through six. And I want to point out that the materials that we provide them with align with STEM curriculum at Mesa Public Schools. Some of the challenges that we are having in water resources, really no different with Mesa or any, is the hiring and recruiting and retaining qualified employees. Currently, with the expansion of the Greenfield plant and the new Signal Butte water treatment plant, we are competing with valley-wide cities for the same talent. We need to have talented operators and supervisors come out and operate and maintain these systems. So we're struggling with that a little bit, because our neighbor to the south of us, Gilbert and Chandler are both, they're expanding their sand tan plant. I think it's just gone online last month, so they were in a major project. So it's the same technology, the same type of plant that we're building out of Signal Butte, and their need to staff that, they have the same needs in staffing that plant as we do. So we're kind of like, we're all in the same ring, we're in the, we're in the octagon, you know, fighting for the same talent, so. Some of the other challenges of the water commodity, our water costs are going up. It's not just the cost of the water, but it's the infrastructure that gets it there. And so those costs are increasing, and we are looking at a possible, there are not any discussions right now, that we don't think there's going to be a shortage, but we do recognize that it's been a dry winter, and hopefully we'll have another miracle May. But we're constantly watching, you know, the value and the status of the water on the river, both the Salt River and the Verde River watersheds, as well as the Colorado River. And then, as was mentioned earlier with the conversation with Beth Hunning, is that we're trying to find that balance of, you know, managing that and maintaining that aging infrastructure, along with the new infrastructure going in. So that provides, you know, it's a challenge to us, we make sure that we've got a steady balance there. We haven't increased a lot of staff in the most recent years, so you'll see in a future slide that we're addressing some of those concerns, we're bringing on some additional staff.
Sorry, Jake, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
How, I mean, we pay for the water, whether it comes from SRP or CAP. So how does having a wet May, how would that help us? Does that lower the cost, the commodity cost of water? If there's an abundance of water in the SRP reservoirs, do we pay less? Or how does having a wet May help us?
Well, it's not necessarily, it helps us because it gives us, it gives us more abundant source. But the cost of the water, we actually see an annual increase, on average, from SRP, about 5% a year. And so we haven't seen, they haven't set their rates yet this year, so we haven't seen that cost. But our capital cost with regards to the Colorado River system, we pay for the water that, per acre foot. And there's a future slide in this presentation to discuss that, too. It's also the cost of the water that we pay for, as well as the capital component for all the infrastructure that gets that water there.
So Jake, a wet May just means that we wouldn't have to have water restrictions sometime in the future? Is that correct? So that's what it's saying?
But it wouldn't necessarily reduce the commodity?
No, the commodity cost is, remember, utilities, most of our cost are fixed cost. They're not variable cost. They're not a commodity as much as they are very much a fixed cost. And so that's why rates are dictated mostly by recovering the cost of the large assets, the fixed cost.
Most of our costs are really just the cost of the water and the transport of the water down the canal.
It's the infrastructure to get that water to the house, treated and get it to the house.
Yeah, it's similar to how we operate and maintain our water systems here. Regardless of the number of connections that we may have, we have to build that system based on max day demand and fire flows and all that other stuff. So we can see a year where we start, you know, our consumption is down and water accounts are down or whatever, but we still need to maintain those utility systems. So it's the same thing with the cost per acre foot has two components. It's got the cost of the water and the capital component for maintaining that infrastructure. Our business objective is to provide clean water on a daily basis with minimal service disruptions to our customers. We've got some measuring success with our meter readers read not only just water meters, they read gas, water, and electric meters on every, about 10,000 meters a month, with an error rate factor of no less than, no more than three errors per 10,000 reads. And the value of that is, is that means that we're able to ensure that our customers receive accurate billing in a timely manner, which is fair and reasonable. Groundwater pumping, this is a metric that we typically don't see a lot of fluctuation in, because we try to manage our water, you know, we try to use our well water and our groundwater as a backup resource. It's kind of like our bank account. But you can see based on this slide here that it has been increasing. A lot of that has to do with, on the Salt River side, which is the water that gets provided to, basically, the Mesa City Zone, which is the largest zone we have, which is Mesa proper, and the boundary line is the canal, the eastern, eastern canal. Salt River had, Salt River had an extended outage this year to do some canal maintenance. So the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant was down and out, out of service temporarily. So what that required us to do was to operate more wells within the city zone. And the same as, while we're anticipating in May, we will have the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, we have been, be able to maintain water service in southeast Mesa through not only just bringing brown road, we, right now, we bring brown road water down to the south as far as we can go. But that doesn't meet the demand currently in southeast Mesa, so we have to pump a lot of water out of the ground. So that's why that metric is climbing. We expect that to go back to normal once Signal Butte comes on. Another thing that I'd like to bring out is like, when we talk about being able to serve our customers without disruption, we do have any, we recognize we have an aging system, and we do have water main breaks and leaks throughout the days, weeks, and months. But we think, I think we do an effective job of responding to those incidents when they occur. Most recently, we had a neighborhood that was almost flooded over in Emerson. We got out there, we got crews out there, we had the assistance of fire, and Mary Cabella's staff did a great job helping us. But I think we do an effective job of recognizing when those events happen, taking care of them, get the customers back in water, and then clean up the mess afterwards. Account growth, everybody likes to talk about southeast Mesa, but if you look at this slide, you can see that we're experiencing growth all over the valley. Some significant ones, we've got Lehigh Crossings up to the northeast, and then you've got Mountain Bridge, Mulberry, and Easemark. Those are all areas where we're seeing a lot of growth, as well as in the industrial corridor. We are, we are bringing on some large water users, and so we are seeing a lot of account growth up there, so. This slide is, kind of gives an overview of the system. You can see that throughout the years of how the system has grown. Currently, we have about 20, almost 2,400 miles of water mains in service, in the ground, with additional pipes coming in, about another 80 addition miles coming in future development. And with those pipes comes appurtenances. That means we have to bring on new pump stations, lift stations, water reservoirs, and well sites. So, as well as fire hydrants. So that's all maintenance things that have to keep on coming as the system expands. Some significant budget challenges, our changes from 1819 is our water commodity. As we were discussing earlier, we're expecting a $1.2 million increase in our water commodities between SRP and the Colorado River this year, and chemicals. Our chemical costs, our chemical costs are anticipated to grow, go up this year, but it's not with the cost of the chemicals, it's the usage. Because the surface water that we get, you can't always guarantee, you know, consistent water quality. So there are times when we have to treat, use more money, use more chemicals to treat the water, to get it into the system and be able to deliver it.
Jake, sometimes that's just a factor of? The quality of the runoff that we get out of the system.
It's the watershed, and so we do participate with the National Forest Foundation to, you know, to provide resources so that we could thin the forest to do that. But yes, when we have a forest fire up in the, with the Verde or the salt watershed, all that stuff, and then you get some rains after that, like you see in California with the mudslides. When all that debris comes in with the water, as it comes down into the valley, it then needs to be treated. And so that, it's an additional cost. So for years, some of the significant savings that the department has been realizing, a lot of it was our chemical costs and our electrical costs, because we do a very good job of making sure that when we're running our pumps or moving or pushing water, we're doing it off-peak hours, so that we're saving money there. But we anticipate this year that our chemical costs are going to go up because the quality of the water that we're currently getting. So not only are we paying more for the water, the quality of the water that we're getting is not that great. Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, it will be coming on in May of 2018, so it'll be operating.
Excuse me, Jake, Mr. Luna has a question.
Jake, I had a question on the meter reader positions. Do you anticipate that one day we'll have technology that will do that for us, so that we don't have to hire personnel to go and do that labor?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Luna, yes, we are currently with our partners in energy. We do have an ongoing consultant that we're about to, we had, went out for an RFP earlier this year, and we're talking with them, we're looking at, because of the challenges, much like Beth was alluding to, Mesa's different, it's not just water meters, we've got water, gas, and electric. So we are working with a firm called Utility Works, and to look at what are the best options for all three of those utilities. The anticipation is yes. Even though we're bringing out, you'll see in the future slide where we're at, we're requesting and we're for another meter reader, it's going to be a little while, and it's going to be a costly endeavor to get into that AMI system. That's where we're heading, we want to get there, not only for just the meter reading purposes, it's for the customer. It's the value of it is actually the customer. So that when a customer calls and has a concern about why their water bill went up, we'll be able to respond to that timely and effectively right then and there, rather than have to go look for the information and find out what happened. But as we keep moving forward, we're averaging about 200 water accounts per month. So that's just water, that doesn't include gas and electric, that's another 100. So about 300 accounts per month that those meter readers have to read. So we have to bring one on about every 10,000 meters that comes on into the, into the system, we have to bring on a new meter reader. Well, that new meter reader is not going to be able to go out and read 600 meters in a day, on that first day. So we have to bring them on a little bit earlier, so we can get them trained and get them up to speed, get them the equipment. But yes, short answer to your question is, we are looking at it, and we're anticipating in a few years that we'll be there. Once again, Signal Butte is coming online in May?
Excuse me, Jake, I'm sorry.
So as we eventually transition more to the SCADA or the, or the remote sensing on the meters, we're still going to have someone that's physically going around looking at the meters, just checking for corrosion and different things like that, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, yes. All right, we're not, we're not going to, we're not talking about maybe in five years, we're not going to need meter readers anymore. They're going to be repurposed, because even though there's a device, it's a meter, it's a mechanical device, it's going, now it's going to have a register on it that's electronic. As we know, that sometimes they may fail, there may be tampering. Most likely, it's going to be tampering, or meters just might stop running, or somebody might turn the valve off or whatever. So yeah, we're still going to repurpose that staff to be out there maintaining that system, to make sure that it's operating, make sure it's accurate. Just because we're going to have an AMI system, an automated system, doesn't mean that we're still not going to get maybe the calls and complaints about the concerns of, you sure my meter's working? That's inherent, and so we're going to, we'll repurpose that staff for that.
Jake, are we seeing much tampering on the power side or on the, on the natural gas side?
Not so much as we do on the water, and that's kind of gone backways. But we do, from time to time, we'll, we'll get some usage. We've got some, we've got some areas in the downtown Mesa area where the electric utility is in the alleys. So they're hard to get to, but our meter readers have to get in there, into those alleys and climb over walls or, and look at them. So whenever we identify something that is abnormal, whether it's on the gas or the electric system, it's reported to our partners in energy, and it's addressed. So we'll have first two months of operation for Signal Butte will be coming this fiscal year. And we're, we're programming in, first, the O&amp;M budget for 1819 would be about $3.2 million. And you'll see on this slide, we have 16 authorized positions, currently 12 have been filled. And like we said, the challenges that we have with recruiting and then retaining our employees, we still have a couple vacancies. And to the conversation that we had earlier about the demand, this plant coming online will be 24 million gallons a day. The plant has the capacity to expand in the future, another 24 for a total 48 MGD. Going back to what our water costs are, this slide is telling you, you see the dark blue and the green, the dark blue is the cost of the water, it's actually the wet commodity. And then you have our capital components for the infrastructure, and that's our total cost per acre foot. And those are the, you can see that. And then over here, you have the SRP on the other side of this part of the slide. You can see where our projected usage needs are from SRP. As I said earlier, we're anticipating a 5% increase, because that's been typical, but they have not set their rates, and we have not seen that yet. Expenses are rising. We had some back in 2015 and 16, or 15, 16, and fiscal years 15, 16, and 16, 17. We did have some operational savings, as I was talking earlier about. A lot of that is the commodity costs with regards to electric and the water, the chemicals, where we saw some savings there. Actually, in 15, 16, we actually had about, we had some excess water that we had ordered, but we weren't going to need. So we were able to remarket that for about a million dollar savings back in 15, 16. But for the most part, we tried to, through, you know, optimization and using electricity off-peak hours, we regularly see savings in electrical costs and chemical savings. But we don't anticipate having a savings this year with regards to the chemicals because of the amount of chemicals that are being used, so. And this is typically, this slide is a partner to the one that I just went to. But you can see in 17, 18, the adopted budget is a little bit higher. Mostly that's regards to Signal Butte, it's not just, it's just the staffing, it's all the tools that we're going to need, the equipment we're going to need, the utility carts to get back and forth, the furniture for the consoles for the operators, and all that stuff, is, that's what's driving that increase. Our wastewater business objective is, not only do we provide quality water to our citizens, but we have to take that water that is put off aside into the collection system, we try to treat that, we treat that to A-plus effluent, and so we try to use that for beneficial reuse in Mesa, as well as our obligation to the Gila River Indian community, where we have an agreement where we provide our effluent for them in exchange for water resources. Some of our performance metrics for the collection system is that the value of the collection system is, it's not a pressurized system, but it does take, it's not like clean water that's under pressure and gets pushed, so it's 90% gravity-fed, and so we have to clean, clean and inspect it on a regular basis. So based on the size of our system, which is about 1,700, we try to get to about 26 miles a month cleaned, and 20%, 20% of the system inspected per year. There for a while, we were doing pretty good with this metric, but as the size of the system is growing, it's getting more and more difficult, so we requested for, and the city manager's office has granted us, we're bringing on an additional wastewater crew, we think this metric will improve. And then with regards to the cleaning, we're going to get more people in the field. Currently, today, we have four large vector trucks that do our cleaning processes, but whenever we get a call for maybe roaches in the sanitary sewer system, or an order complaint, that crew gets pulled off from its primary objective of cleaning to go out and take care of those customer service issues. So bringing on some additional staff to handle those areas, we'll be able to refocus that, those larger industrial crews, to focus on the metric of keeping the system clean. And that's the benefit that we have with our sanitary sewer overflows. For a system our size, with the AWWA, the metric should be, you should have no more than one sanitary sewer overflow per 100 miles of pipe. So that, for a city of Mesa's side, that would be 17 per year. As you can see, our target is zero, we don't like to see any of the wastewater come out of where it's supposed, it needs to stay in the pipe and go where it needs to go, we don't want it on the ground, or in playgrounds, or in the streets. So our target is zero, right now, we're currently about 1.6. We don't have too many, even though our system is older, we're not like the east coast, where, you know, where it's been there for a couple hundred years, and they're having our problems, so I think we do an effective job of maintaining our system. With regards to the inspections, we do that, and Beth mentioned this earlier, we do have one camera vehicle that we go out and we do about six miles a day, and where we just run the camera down the pipes, we get an idea of what the issues are, whether it's clean, whether there's some defects, and we use that, and so, but this is older technology, it's a, the camera van's probably about, almost 20 years old, it's older technology, it's analog, and so we take it back, we take the disc, then we send it back, and then we have to review it. What we're anticipating in fiscal year 17, 18, we're targeting a newer van to, which is going to be digital technology, where basically we'll be able to take a snapshot, rather than, you know, taking, you know, 45 minutes to go through a half a mile of pipe, we can go through four miles of pipe in a matter of minutes, because we're just going to take that thing down, it's a digital camera, 360 digital camera's going to go down, we're going to have the data, we'll take it back and analyze it in quicker time, so it'll be more efficient, we'll be able to have a better understanding of the conditions of our system, to be able to maintain it more effectively. Another slide that shows about the increase in, of the system for the last few years, currently, we have about 1,700 miles of main, so that metric with the AWWA, we have to maintain that line, and so we have to, have to clean and inspect so many different miles, so also with the addition of that, we've got, we have to maintain, we have additional lift stations. Lift stations are where the gravity system gets to a point where it can't be gravity anymore, you had county lawyers, so we have to build a lift station to be able to lift that water back up to a higher elevation, and keep the system going from east to west, north to south. And also with that, you know, we have odor control facilities, because, you know, we have wastewater reclamation plants, and we have sewer lift stations in areas where there's, you know, neighborhoods, or businesses, or whatever, there's always inherent odors, or even just concerns, so we have to, you know, fund and build odor control facilities to mitigate those complaints and those odors. Significant budget changes was the 91st Avenue Water Treatment Plant, our cost, that's $250,000, or an additional cost for currently what we're paying, that's just our share of the plant, of those operations. The Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant, a joint venture of that plant that we were talking about, that expansion, 127, excuse me, 127.
Should that be a million?
Yeah, this is.
Thousands.
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 Operational costs.
These are, yeah, these are operational dollars, yeah. And then preventative maintenance, additional 70, $75,000 for, these are like SCADA items and stuff, that we need to replace switches and stuff like that, so we can maintain the system. And the three wastewater collection systems, so that's 372,000, but that's, that's not just for the three, that's going to be, take ongoing costs for the staff and the salaries, and one-time costs for all the equipment, and trucks, and vehicles that they're going to be for that crew. Our operational, we, well, see, here's our net sources and uses, you can see that we've seen some savings throughout the years in 15, 16. We do, since we are a partner in 91st Avenue, which is the Shrog system, they set a budget, operation maintenance budget every year, and we have to pay our portion of it, so every once in a while, that something, you know, we might recognize some savings in the overall program, where there will be money, dollars refunded to the Shrog cities, and so we've had some refund settlements with regards to our operational costs in other years, with regards to 91st Avenue, and again, electrical and chemical savings.
Questions?
Yeah.
Yes. Where are the projections for the sources and uses for the next five years that we're projecting? Is that presented to us previously in a different slide?
No, that'll be presented after, once the mayor and council member Whitaker, once the departments go over their budget presentations, Candace will come up, and we'll then do the enterprise fund as a whole and show the projections, so that's later in the presentation.
Got it, thank you.
Again, this slide is showing that we'll have some vacancy savings due to the difficulty in recruiting and retaining staff, so those are some of the savings that we expect to see in the next year. This slide is how do we compare with neighboring cities? So what we've added in here for the first year, we're talking about, we've got about 4,100 residents in Mesa that are served by Arizona Water Company, and we've got, so we're kind of comparing ourselves, this slide is the comparison of what the value of Mesa's water is, water services are compared to surrounding communities. And we have Johnson, Johnson Utilities doesn't really provide service to any of our residents, but they are, they do supply wastewater services to neighboring cities, so these were added in as a comparison to valley cities, of what value of our water sewer services are. And with that, thank you for your time, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Reddian.
Question on the, as these major projects come in, come online, is there any savings, or are we always chasing kind of structure, infrastructure costs? So like Signal Butte, and Greenfield, is there any savings that then we can add? I see the water Mesa's the highest comparison compared to other cities, so do we realize any, any savings as these projects come online?
Councilman Reddian, mayor and council, actually, it's creating the opposite effect, because again, 2014, we added our 60%, 70% into a $580 million capital improvement program, most of which was related to the Signal Butte and the Greenfield plant. That capital cost, you can even see it in, even in the water chart, you can see that chart that they showed, that summary, and you'll see it later on, how the debt service costs continue to rise. That is putting the pressure on the finances of the utilities, both in water, wastewater, and the others, but specifically water and wastewater, you'll see the greatest pressure on the finances, the bottom line is coming from these new big plants that are coming onboard, and that puts pressure on the rates. It's helping us, what it helps us to do, though, the offset of that, is it allows us to grow, it allows us to bring on large industry, and allow large subdivisions to continue to grow and expand without having any restrictions as far as development, because we have the ability to provide the water and wastewater. But again, as I mentioned before, that cost gets spread across the entire city, as opposed to in the past, where we were able to have impact fees that would be associated directly with the new improvements that are associated, or new development associated with that new improvements. We no longer have that ability to do that, and so these rates and the cost of capital get spread throughout the entire system. Some of it will be offset in the future, as we're able to, as we're seeing, the expansion of our utility customers, Jake, so that kind of helps, obviously, the more customers we can have onto the system, that helps to spread the cost out, and so that's why we're pretty aggressive about, you know, expanding our utility customers, whether it's on the industrial side or whatever, because they then become part of, and sharing in the cost of making payments here.
Okay, so you had mentioned, Jake, as far as well extractions, so the Signal Butte coming online, would that take off, what we have to pay then to extract from wells in the city, so is there anything that?
Yeah, there's, there's a balance, Councilmember Reddian.
Like those examples?
There's, there's a balance there. We anticipate, once we bring on that additional 24 million gallons a day, that's going to be less pressure on the wells that we have in that area, not as well as the pressures that we have with regards to the Brown Road Water Treatment Plant. Now, they work in, they're both taking the same source, up on the northeast part of Mesa, you've got that turnout there that provides the water to that plant, and now we've got the new turnout structure down in southeast. Currently, without Signal Butte online, what we do is, we have to push all that water from Brown Road down south, we call it pressure mounting, which we over-pressurize the pipes to be able to get that water to go down south. There's a cost to that, especially at Brown Road, 90% of the water that Brown Road, or 100% of the water that Brown Road treats, and then pushes out into the system is done through pumping. We're either pumping it south, or pumping it east, and most critically is, we're pumping it all up into Los Angeles, where you see those reservoirs up on top of the hill. It's really what's, that's where the typical costs are. So with regards to wells down in Southeast Mesa, that's expensive water, because we're cutting into our banking account, and the Arizona Department of Water Resources regulates how much water we should be using, and the more that we use, it takes away not only from our recovered water that we have, and we try to hold on to, to it, it comes at a cost. So, yes, with the new plant coming on, we should see some savings in a sense, but it's still, it's still costly to maintain the system, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Chris, I know a few years ago, we, the council increased our water rates more to push water conservation, more so than the rates, but when I was looking at our, at our cost, our water charge, you know, per resident, I mean, we're, gosh, we're almost double what Phoenix is. I don't know, I'm trying to figure out what that, why we're so much higher.
Where are you looking, what slide are you looking at?
I'm on the, I'm actually looking at the.
Annual, annual cost comparison?
Yeah, I'm at the attachment one, homeowner's comparison for fiscal year 17, 18. And we're higher, even on solid wastewater, wastewater, we're higher, way higher than Phoenix.
Right, so remember, you need to take about 20% of that is related, 20, 25% of that is related, 20% is probably related to the transfer. So if you just look at just what, how the water, actual water, wastewater, the utilities, we're kind of in the middle of the range, once you take off the transfer. So the transfer, the $100 million, $108 million adds on to the cost of water, all the utilities, but if you, so if you want to just compare, really just the cost of what we, takes us provide water, it's not any different than anyone else, but because we include on, on top of that, the return back to the general fund, and I would say it's about 20% overall, that's where we see the biggest difference between us. Once you take that off, we're right in the middle, the pack for the whole valley.
Right, okay, perfect.
Mr. Whitaker.
On slide 16, your budget is showing a loss of $900,000. You plan on balancing the budget moving forward, or what's the plan as far as that goes? How long do you believe that you can sustain that?
So mayor and council, we're showing you water separately, but the way we manage this fund is we manage it with all of the different departments, elements, funds inside of it, so because we do that, because there are times, for example, debt service, on one particular, what it may be water, may be much higher in one year, and lower in a later year, and so we kind of try to balance this out between water, wastewater, gas, electric, solid waste, and so we try to create a system where we try to balance out, sometimes there are spikes in capital, equipment, what else, Candace, other elements, so we try to balance that out through the whole system, so, and at one year, you may see a net loss, but overall, in the whole system, we just try to continue to balance it out.
Correct, mayor, councilmember Whitaker, when we're looking at that, we need to remember that when we issue bonds, we issue utility revenue bonds, and so while our bond is structured overall, how much we issue in each given year may have more principal due in water one year, more principal due in wastewater another year, more principal due in natural gas, and that will skew their annual net sources and uses, which is why we manage the fund as a whole. And so we'll go over that when we get to the end, and you'll be able to see the trends over time, as you asked about kind of that going out five years, you'll be able to see those trends, actually, for the water, when you look at their, their debt is actually coming up in about two or three years, their debt, well, the debt portion related to water will actually increase as we start paying off more principal, and you actually see that will get more negative, will go more negative, and then you'll see solid waste, who was negative for a couple of years, as we transitioned their CNG vehicles, we had additional capital costs, those will actually come back up, and they'll be more in the positive now. So that's why we manage the whole fund with all of the businesses. So some will go negative one year, and some will go negative a different year, depending on what's going on, capital costs, debt service, that type of thing.
So as a whole, the budget will be balanced?
As a whole, we're maintaining the fund, the fund balances between the 8 to 10%.
But not net uses, there, I think in the out years, you still see a net loss in some years?
We do, right, so as we go through, even with the recommended rate adjustments, you will see that there is a decrease in the net uses and revenues and sources.
But we try to manage that fund balance, because we recognize there are times that we need to actually, anticipating large draws on debt service, that we need to build up those reserves, so we don't create these spikes in rates, and that's been a very insignificant part of our rate structure, is to provide for predictability in rates over a long period of time, so that in the past, we had had times where rates would go from 2% one year to 6%, and it was very difficult to manage that, and also the impact on the rate pair. So we've tried very hard to create kind of, for all the years going out, keep rates low, but also try to keep them in a predictable, as low as possible, so they're predictable every year going out.
That's correct. So and again, as we get towards, we kind of wanted to let you have the, have each department come and talk about their budget, like any other department would, make sure that they're able to talk about their challenges and their opportunities and what's going on, and then we were going to kind of wrap it all up at the end, but we can actually show you the forecast. It is, I believe, attachment three in the item, so attachment three has, that's our cash flow for all of the enterprises, so it has the enterprise as a whole, and then it has it broken down into each one of the business entities, and you can see those, if you go into attachment three on the agenda.
So the goal is to balance the budget, or it's not to be balanced?
The goal, as, as we stated at the very beginning, is to manage our reserves, so they don't fall below 8%. We try to shoot somewhere between 8 and 10%, and try to anticipate a long-term goal of maintaining that reserve over time. There will be years where the, there'll be net losses, but we try to maintain the reserves to imagine, or anticipate those times, so that we can have, over a long period of time, we will maintain a positive reserve balance, that's what we're trying to achieve at the end of the day. So because we started, we even started out with a significant fund balance, but the actual revenues and expenditures in one year may be, that it's a greater, because of debt service, or whatever, it may be higher, it may be a net loss, but we are absorbing that in our reserves, and as long as our reserves maintain that 8 to 10%. And as long as our reserves maintain that 8% to 10%, we consider that as our first objective. To your point, we would, yeah, that's what, in all our funds, we would love to get kind of net zero of revenues and expenditures. But the nature of utilities, the nature of a lot of things to do with, because we have very large, we have to anticipate large one-time expenditures and impacts to our budget, sometimes it's difficult to build in that kind of fluctuation in revenues. Our revenues don't adjust dramatically like that for one-time projects, and so we try to build that in over a longer period of time. If that makes sense.
And then Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, each, each year, as even though we set the budget, each year, we're very diligent in the financial management of all of the funds, including the enterprise fund. And so if you actually look in the 15 or 16, 17 actuals that are in this particular slide, you can see that we actually ended at a positive net sources and uses. That was not the original budget, and that was due to us looking at the debt service and what we could refinance through lower interest rates. And so we're very diligent on looking at the financial management and taking advantage of any opportunity that comes along.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Additional questions for these folks? Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll pick up the pace here. Scott's been warming up over there. He's limber, agile, and Frank's going to go get in the starting box, he's going to sprint. Yeah, I think, well, he had to go get warmed up. He had to stretch out a little bit.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Scott Boucher, the Environmental Management Sustainability Director. I have with me also Sherri Collins, who's our senior fiscal analyst, so she's the one who knows all the numbers behind the slides that we have today. In the interest of moving along, I'll just jump right into the presentation. First is just to give you a quick update on our household hazardous materials facility. If you look to the left, that's a rendering that we've shown you in the past of that facility. And if you look to the right, that is a picture from last week of where we are at on the construction of that project. We are set to open, we're still on schedule to open that in the fall of 2018. So this month, we'll be holding our last household hazardous waste event, and we'll start the transfer process over to having a full-time facility. You can see some of the things that we measure with the facility, and we'll continue to measure those, or what we measure with the events, we'll continue to measure those with the facility and report back to you on the success of that facility as it opens. The next slide gets into our energy efficiency. So if you look, these are the top three projects that we completed in 2017 with our partners, both in water resources and facilities. You can see the savings that are associated with those projects. And then if you look down below, our performance measure is kilowatt hours saved through energy conservations. Now, this is all of the energy efficiency projects that we've done since we began tracking these in about 2009, 2010. And so you can see the savings, the monetary savings that's associated with those projects, and also the kilowatt hours. And then we tried to put it into some perspective as far as what that would equate to is vehicles driven with the greenhouse gas emission reductions associated with that.
Question on that. So the capital investment that was required to actually do those projects, how many years, based on the savings that you're projecting, does that actually pay for itself?
It's a very good question. And so if you look at like the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant LED lighting retrofit fit, that is, that is a project, our lighting projects are usually our greatest payback projects. That's about five years. So the capital cost for that was $228,000, and it's about $44,000 a year in savings. It's five years. Now, the tougher ones are when you look at the HVAC and the building automation system projects, these are end-of-life projects. So in other words, the HVAC and the building automation system that's in place is at the end of its life. It's no longer usable. And, you know, a lot of the building automation systems that we have are 1990s technology, and so you can't even get replacement parts for the building automation systems. What we try and do is we work with our partners in facilities, is look at the delta in between a like-for-like, so to speak, even though you can't go back to that 90s technology because it doesn't really exist anymore, but trying to look and find that sweet spot for what investment are we going to make and what savings are we going to get from that additional investment into energy efficiency. And we look at it on a project-by-project basis. I think one of the things you'll see, the picture of the award there, is we were municipality of the year with SRP, and that's because of the partnership that we have with them in these energy efficiency projects, because they provide rebates for these projects because they're trying to lower their demand. And so we try and look at it on a project-by-project basis in that regards. Next slide is renewable energy. So this is a snapshot of four of our solar installations that we have. Now, these four solar installations were all done under the Solar Services Agreement model, where we partnered with SolarCity. You'll see from these, we try and find a sweet spot on these where we're about 70%, 75% of the building's energy usage. You don't want to overproduce because with the SSA model, you are paying for that energy. All of these projects, I will say, had savings from day one, so we were paying less for the solar than what we would pay for the conventional energy from SRP. Now, in addition to that, though, all of these projects had an incentive from SRP associated with them, that SRP no longer offers those incentives. So we tried to find those sweet spots within these buildings. The one that you'll see that maybe overproduces is at 103%, that is our Fiesta PD station. That was a new build when we installed the solar onto that facility. It's also a lead facility, so what happened is we were working with engineering on energy usage projections when the building would come online. The building is actually operating more efficiently than what we had anticipated with some of those lead standards that we had put in place with that building. And so we're right about, you know, it's actually a net zero building, so to speak, for the, the usage there. And so this is just a good snapshot of what it looks like with ours. And you'll see, one of the projects that we're working right now with the facilities group is on the Multi-Gem Center. And so what we hope to see is we'll come back in a year or two, and if I showed you the same graph, you'd see this somewhere around that 70%, 75% usage for the Multi-Gem Center. Once we do a lighting HVAC and building automation project there, we're anticipating that energy usage is going to come down.
Excuse me, Scott.
Yes.
So these projects were all done under the old incentives that were available for solar energy. I've heard recently some of that, there's been changes, and, you know, some of the proposed projects that we talked about, the shade structure, for example, at the Performing Arts Center, others, it's, it's more difficult for these projects to be financially viable? Is that true?
Yeah, so when you look at it from the, you know, what we looked at for a viable project in the past for solar was that it had savings from day one, so that we were paying less for the renewable energy than when we were paying for the conventional energy. What came into play with that is the incentive that SRP would provide. So when you look at these four, I believe all of them were getting a four cent per kilowatt hour incentive. And what SRP does is they buy the renewable energy credits with that four cents, and they actually provide that to SolarCity. They pay that four cents to SolarCity, who is the SSA partner with us. So we're paying somewhere between six and seven cents a kilowatt hour to SolarCity for the energy produced from the solar, and then SRP, in addition, is giving them about four cents. So it ends up in that 10, 11 cent range that they're getting per kilowatt hour for those systems and what energy is produced from them. Now, with that incentive going away, obviously, the solar provider still needs to have a rate of return associated with their investment, and so what we see is that that ends up going more to the customer, of course, because there is not an incentive available from the electric utility, SRP in this case.
So with those incentives no longer being there, it's going to be difficult for, I think there's a public demand for more renewable energy projects, but it seems like it's tough for us to financially rationalize them at this point.
It, it is, and we've had conversations with some of our neighboring cities who have sent some, set some of these renewable energy goals, and they understand that there is a premium that needs to be paid sometimes in order to reach those goals. What we're doing is trying to look, we continue to look at different projects within the city of Mesa and where it can make sense. The larger the size of the system that we could put in, the, the better the financials typically look. So if we have large energy-using facilities that have excess space associated with them, and one of the ones that we've had some discussions with our water resources partners is at the Brown Road Water Treatment Plant, and the potential of maybe doing a project there. But again, the savings with that project would be, I would say, minimal. When you look at what the budget is, we just got done looking at the water resources budget, and when you're saving a couple of thousand dollars a year on their electric bill, it really isn't a huge savings. But if it's something where we can produce renewable energy and keep our costs relatively the same from that, those are projects that we're, we're interested in, in doing.
Thank you. Mr. Whitaker.
Have we spoke to SRP at all to try to work out like a custom PPA agreement where they would be willing to pay us a certain amount per kilowatt hour, that if we built projects large enough, that we could justify the financial investment cost? Or are we just like every other customer to SRP where we have no leverage to be able to ask for higher compensation for solar?
We have had conversations with them. They have expressed to me that they, because from their financial standpoint, they're trying to keep rates lower for their customers also, they kind of set poliverdi almost as that, as that mark for them of what they're willing to pay. And so, you know, we're looking at a three, four cents per kilowatt hour is what they're telling us that they want to come in at. So what they're looking at is much larger solar installations that you're seeing multiple megawatt, large, you know, 100 megawatt projects that are going in, in remote locations that aren't necessarily the smaller locally generated, whether it be rooftop or ground-mounted or carport structure-type things that we're, we would be able to do with the amount of land that we have.
So it would have to come back at three to four cents? SRP is not willing to budge at all on those numbers?
SRP has not expressed an interest in, in paying much more than what they're able to get energy for currently.
Okay. I think you did say something significant there, which is if, if there is a desire on the part of this council, and the desire on the part of the community to look for more renewable energy options, the financially viable way to do that would be to go to Salt River Project and say, hey, we want to partner with you on a large-scale industrial, you know, wholesale-level solar production facility out in the desert somewhere. We'll pass a bond, chip in X number of millions of dollars and be X percent owner in that project. Something along those lines?
Mayor, they actually have offered, we wouldn't have to issue a bond. They would, they would sell us the power, but then there would be...
A premium.
A premium that they would be associated with that. So, I mean, at some point, if council's interested in creating that, there may be, you know, an interest that even if, and I don't know what, how much of a premium, we would talk, you know, what it is. I haven't, we haven't gotten that far. But if there's an interest, because I think those costs are going to come down, so I don't know that that, how long does that premium last? But I think there's an opportunity to negotiate with SRP if we want to increase the portfolio of energy source for Mesa, for Mesa residents that are SRP customers. SRP is certainly open to the idea, and I think they would actually welcome it as an opportunity to provide that. Now, they are just going to look and say, for Mesa to have that additional renewable energy portfolio, the premium may be, I don't know what the cost would be. And they would absorb all the util, the, sorry, the additional debt and the capital. They would, that's something they would take on. We would just be paying for it through additional rate increase.
So we just have to commit to buying X amount of renewable energy?
Right. There'd be a negotiated percentage of what comes into Mesa, whatever that goal is, and then they would tell us, then that's going to cost the average taxpayer, or, sorry, rate payer, I don't know, whatever it is, so many percentages more. And, you know, at some point, if that's interest, we haven't gone any further than that, so I don't know what, you know, it's always going to be, if you want to add 30% more, how much is that going to cost, you know, the average rate payer? I don't know. But at some point, if council's interested, we can go have those conversations, at least bring back to council and say, do you think the average rate payer would be willing to pay $2 more or $1 more, or, I don't know, maybe it's 10. But whatever the percentage is, we could certainly have that conversation. And SRP then is in the business, and they, I think they're working with some very large-scale solar resources, especially up with the closing of the, yeah, the NGSSes. And so there's, there may be some opportunities early on to get into those early. But again, there will be a cost. I can't quantify that, but it's, it may be something we may want to look into.
Well, it seems like a good idea to have those conversations. I mean, we don't know what our level of interest is, I would guess, until we know what the price tag would be, but it might be interesting to explore that.
We can do that. Our next slide, you will see, this is, I would say this is the biggest pressure that is upcoming for the solid waste utility, and it is recycling. We have seen dramatic changes in the recycling market over the last several years, and we also have contracts that are coming up with our recycling partners that run the recycling facilities that we deliver our recyclable materials to. As you see from the chart, back in fiscal year 2012, 13, we had over a million dollars worth of revenue that was generated from our recyclables, and that was checks that were cut to the city of Mesa from our recycling facilities. We are projecting out into 1920 that that's actually going to switch, that it's going to be an expense of almost $1 million to recycle those materials. While you see in those years where it's pretty steady, we had contracts previously that had a floor price associated with them. So we had a floor price with our largest recycling partner of $26 a ton. So at a minimum, the city of Mesa would be paid $26 a ton for every inbound ton that we brought into that facility. They, all of our recycling partners have expressed that they will no longer enter into contracts that have floor prices associated with them. What the market is now doing is they're having contracts that have a processing fee associated with them. It can be anywhere between 60 to $85 a ton is what we're seeing right now as a processing fee, and then there's a revenue share portion to it. And that revenue share, it can be anywhere between 60 to 75% that the city would receive 60 to 75% of the revenue from the commodity that is sold. To give you an idea, with our other contract, the floor price is $26, and we get a 26% share of the revenue. So whichever one is greater. With the market conditions currently, at about, what we projected here was at about $100 a ton, which I think in the last couple of months, we've been getting about $105 per ton for these recyclable materials. So this is about what we're seeing now, and with those processing fees in place, it is a dynamic that is switching to where recycling now is going to have a cost associated with it as opposed to a revenue.
So this is more good news?
Yes.
Like the...
That's what we're here for.
Does this reflect, though, I mean, when we do send waste to recycling rather than to the landfill, we save money by not paying for the landfill? So do these, does this deficit reflect any savings for...
Well, and that's portion of it. So when you look at 12, 13, in that million dollars worth of revenue, in addition to that, we had somewhere between $8, $900,000 in avoided cost associated with that because we didn't have to send it to the landfill. When you look at a $900,000, you know, what is it, $935,000 in expenses, to give you a perspective, to landfill that material would cause, cost us about $990,000. So it is almost the same cost to landfill it is what it would be to recycle it. The thing is, though, is there's, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news on these things, but there's also efficiencies that the city could gain if things were landfilled, because you could, you don't have to run two different routes, you don't have to have all the other costs that are associated with it. So this is something that is in a changing market. I think one of the things that we're going to see is we're going to have to start looking at what's in that blue barrel and identifying what has real value to it and what does not. And so an example I'll give you is glass. Glass is the heaviest material that we put into that blue barrel, and when you're paying a fee of $60 to $85 a ton to process it, and then at the end, it has no value to it. In other words, nobody is willing to pay money for it. And I've even seen some of the, the information that our partners have given us where it has a negative value associated to it, which I don't quite understand, and I'm trying to get an explanation of how it has a negative value. What, at what point do we then say it's worthwhile to actually recycle this material, or is it something that, from an economic standpoint, would be better off not, not to be in the blue barrel?
Thank you. You need to hit your microphone. Mr. Luna.
Scott, is, this is obviously not just a Mesa issue, it's a regional issue. Is there something that we could do regionally to try to work with these four companies? Because certainly we, we want to recycle, we want the, we want our residents to recycle. It's a good thing to recycle, but these are, it's getting cost prohibitive.
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor Luna, we're actually having conversations with our partner cities and, and with our recycling partners on this, and trying to look at different ways that we can deal with recycling. And looking at, one of the things that, that we're having the discussions of is what, what has value, really looking at what's in the barrels, whether it's the blue barrel, the green barrel, and the black barrel. And then in addition to that, remember, we have a commercial side of the operation that we run where we get bins and roll-offs, trying to look at what materials are in those... Trying to look at what materials are in those containers and what has value to it? What has real value to it that somebody is willing to pay for at the end? And maybe reassessing what, how we are doing these things so that we're taking the things that have real value to them and recycling those and things that possibly don't have the value, maybe those things are going to the landfill. And it's, it's not just a local issue. This is, this is a nationwide issue, and it really becomes an international issue too. Because a lot of this is being driven by China. Most of our recyclable materials were going to China. China has put up what they call the green fence where they have made, so their allowable contamination rate for material going into their country, they have dropped down to a 0.5% contamination rate. We're being told by many of our recycling vendors that they can't meet that contamination rate at this point. You know, even other news, we've, we've had some materials such as cardboard where we're not even getting bids for that material from folks. Where folks are saying, I, I can't take the material from you anymore because I don't have a market I can sell it to, and therefore I'm not going to buy something if I'm going to lose money off of it. So they're just saying, they're, they're not bidding on the materials for us. And we haven't, we haven't seen that before.
Scott, so in those situations, we're still paying for folks to separate out and then that cardboard's going to the landfill?
No, well, with, it depends. So with our cardboard bins, what we're doing currently, so we have a cardboard program, and this would be our front load cardboard is where we're doing this, where we would typically build, bring it to somebody who is just taking cardboard and paper and turning that and selling those, bailing it up and selling it off. We're currently taking it to the MRFs, the, the materials recycling facility and getting that $26 per ton floor price for it currently. And that's, that's the most economical thing for us to do currently. Once those contracts go away, which would be in October of this year, then we'll have to reevaluate where we're taking that material to. The other thing we're trying to do is also do a lot of outreach to our cardboard commercial customers, because most of them are filling up six and eight yard bins of cardboard. So this, these are businesses that deal with a lot of cardboard on a daily basis. And trying to get them to remove, because with the, the issue that our cardboard recyclers are running into, so if you think about when you order something from Amazon and it has either styrofoam inside of it, or now it's the air, you know, the plastic air bubble that's inside of there. If that's inside the box and it gets compacted, there's no way for that recycling facility to, to identify that and get it out of their stream because as it's going through, they're not looking in every individual box. Or if it's been smashed down and that air has come out, now you've just got a thin layer of plastic inside a cardboard box. So we're doing a lot of outreach, trying to talk to those customers about that. Material has to come out of the box beforehand. Otherwise, it's, it's just a, a, you know, it, it doesn't have as much value to it. And I guess it's one of those things, a commodity is only worth as much as somebody's willing to pay for it. So.
Mr. Glover.
A quick question, Scott. So going forward, what would be the best items that if we were to limit in the blue barrel, what people can put in them, what would be those best items?
What we have seen nationally is glass. Glass is the number one thing. There's a lot of cities that have taken glass out of the blue barrel, just because it's the heaviest material that there is, and in all honesty, has the least value to it. So when you look at the new model of a processing fee based on a tonnage basis and a revenue share, if it's the heaviest material but has the least value, it, it's not something that you would want in there. The issue is, and I'll be completely honest, we have trouble getting folks to put what they're supposed to put into the blue barrel currently with our contamination rates. And that's just being honest. So to tell somebody, I can remember as, as a child, the first thing I recycled were soda bottles. We were always allowed one soda a week and we put them into a container and then you would bring those, those glass bottles back. So if we're having trouble getting people not to put styrofoam and other materials into the recycling barrel currently, to tell them they can't put something in that they've been recycling their entire life is going to be a challenge for us. So, you know, the outreach that we would have to do, and I think we're going to have to get to a point too, where when we start doing inspections of the blue barrels, if people don't conform with what needs to go into the blue barrel, we might have to start taking blue barrels away because the contamination, if, if we're not able to get somebody to purchase the material because of the contamination rates, we can't continue to collect it from residents and pay more than what it would be otherwise.
Have you thought about imposing fines?
That's something we have thought about, but it hasn't been something that we have moved forward with.
We get in trouble just for looking in people's barrels.
Why?
Just lots of calls to council members about invading people's privacy.
Yes. People are very sensitive about their barrels. I have learned this over the years also. I, I think what it becomes though, is there's a, there's a real financial impact on it. And so we have to have a conversation in regards to if there's a financial impact to it, we, we have to do what we have to do or in order to, to make this material as clean as possible. That's the biggest thing that's happening right now is the contamination rates.
I don't mean to change the topic, I'm still confused. How does the revenue go negative?
Because we will pay, so if we have a processing fee, so you have, just say it's $65 a ton processing fee that you are paying, and we bring 30,000 tons a year to a facility. There's, there's an amount of money that you're going to be paying, that's what, 1.82 million dollars in processing fees that we would pay the recycling facility. And then they would give us a 60% revenue share of the commodity that is sold. And if you sell that at $100 a ton on average, by the time you take out the contamination rate and residue associated with it, there's less tonnage that you're actually getting paid on, so now your tonnage that you're getting paid on somewhere between 20 and 25,000 tons, that revenue that they're going to give to the city of Mesa is going to be less than what the processing fee is.
Oh, that's a decrease in revenue?
Yes. Yes. So in other words, we will be paying the recycling facilities
I call it an expense.
Yeah, it's an expense. And that's what it becomes. It, it switches from a revenue to an expense.
But like we said, there, what's not reflected in this is the cost savings of not taking it to the landfill.
Yeah, but it's getting there.
But it's getting there. So for at least the next couple of years, we're losing money, but we're not losing as much as we're saving by not taking it to the landfill. But that gap is getting narrower and narrower. So maybe in a year or two from now, we'll have to ask ourselves the hard questions, do we want to spend money to recycle?
Right. And that is then driven by market conditions. And that's one of the things with the floor price, we're protected from some of the risk associated with it because there was a minimum amount we would receive per ton. Now, we're going to be much more open to those market fluctuations in regards to the commodity prices. So if the commodity goes down, if we're projecting it $100 a ton here, if the, the price of those commodities drops down, say it's 90 or 80 dollars a ton, it gets, you know, the, the expenses are worse. If it goes up to where it's 120, 140 dollars a ton, we could flip this to where we actually are making money again. But the market is very volatile, has been forever. And so it's just, we are more open to that market volatility now than what we were in the past.
Let's go. We, we could, we could actually start losing money as quickly as October, once the contract is
That's, that's that delta that you see, you're correct, Mayor. Councilmember Thompson, you are correct. That's why when you see the difference between 18, 19, and 1920 is because we have those three or four months where we're going to get that $26 a ton. Really, we, we didn't anticipate, the only change that we anticipated between 18, 19, and 1920 is that that contract goes away. That's the only difference between those numbers is those three months of revenue then that would then switch to an expenditure.
But it was a great, it was a great contract. I think that's the thing, we're coming off a very good, you know, arrangement for the city. And now we're just going to be subject to the ups and downs of the market. That was kind of our hedge against the market before. And, and the contractor got the benefit of the upside of that. We just got protected on the bottom side. But now the commodities have all dropped to the bottom, and so they're not willing to take, now it's a risk aversion on their part. So now we're going to have, we're going to be exposed to the ups and downs of the commodity market.
Mr. Glover.
A few quick questions. How many blue barrels are there in the city of Mesa?
So we have about 135. Let me get to, I have that in another slide here. We have about 132,000 blue barrels.
And if we were to go and inspect them, what would be the added financial burden to the city?
We would probably, we, I, I haven't calculated those numbers, but we have what's called quality insurance inspectors that go out and look into those. We would probably have to hire somewhere in the neighborhood of five to 10 more, depending on the frequency and the follow up that we would do into those, those barrels.
Have we had any private conversations, or at least not private conversations, but conversations with private entities such as Waste Management and Republic Services on how they're handling this issue?
Yeah, so those are our partners. Though, they are the ones that are running the recycling facilities that we are bringing the material to. Republic Services actually just purchased this year, Re-Community, which is the recycling facility that takes most of our material at the Salt River landfill. It's co-located at the landfill. They have purchased that facility. And they have similar issues that they run into as far as contamination rates. I will tell you that both Republican Waste have told us that we have some of the cleanest material that they receive when we look at our audits and we look at the results, but we still have contamination rates that are somewhere in the 12 to 15% range. And though, even though when you compare us to other municipalities in the valley and even looking nationwide, we're relatively clean in comparison to that, we're not where the market is demanding that we be.
Did it give us more money if the, if it's cleaner than it, if it's not contaminated?
What they're telling us is that that would be reflected in the tonnage price that we would receive.
So it's different for each client that they interact with? I mean, does Mesa receive a different rate than Tempe?
No, it, it does get, it's interesting because it gets mixed in together. So when you go to the facility in, at the Salt River landfill, you'll see trucks from Republic Services that are going there, you'll see trucks from Mesa, you'll see trucks from Scottsdale that are delivering that material there. We are audited anywhere between a quarterly and annual basis, depending on our contracts and depending on how the, the partners want to arrange the audits that we do. When we do those audits, those audits set what we will get paid based on what the composition of the material is. So in other words, if we have, and it's interesting, because if you have an audit that has a large amount of cardboard in it, which is the most, which has the most value to it when it's clean, you will receive more money. You could have more contamination, but it actually is a better rate that you're going to get paid because that cardboard's worth more money. Whereas we've had other audits where we had a very low contamination rate, but for some reason, we also had a low amount of cardboard as a percentage, and we actually were receiving less money for those materials because it's, it's all based off of formulas that are put out. Does that make sense?
Yes, kind of. But I'm, I have a better idea. I think the law of supply and demand says that if we decrease the supply of recycling materials, the demand from their side is going to go up, right? They're going to need more recyclable materials in order to sell them. So how long was this contract period that just expired?
The one we have right now is about a, I think it was a five-year contract with renewables, renewables that are available.
So do, what would we think about just taking the blue trash cans and going and dumping them in the dump for a few months and then coming back and seeing if they are willing to negotiate a little more? I mean, like, we're the second biggest city up here in, in the Phoenix metro area. I got to imagine if we take away all of their supply, that's going to start negotiations, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker and Councilmember Glover, to your questions, we've had some very progressive talks with both Republican Waste to this point, but this comes down to risk as far as they're concerned. They would like to set a processing fee that means they break even and all the market volatility falls upon us. They would take a much smaller percentage of the profit on the upside, but have no risk on the downside. What we've told them so far is that our council will not accept 100% of the risk in this situation. We are willing to be good partners, we're willing to share that risk with them, but we need a deal that sets us up so we both go together in the market volatility. Otherwise, they have no reason to find buyers because their costs are covered. So while we've never actually discussed with them the idea of shutting them down and, and just having everything go to the garbage for a while, we are trying to push them towards the idea that if we are 50/50 partners on this, we will continue to try to make this a viable option. If they expect the city to take all of the risk so that they have only upside, that is not a deal that we are interested in doing in the future.
Have we considered just stop supplying them with material?
Yeah, and so one of the, one of the things in the contract, and, and we do this both with our trash contracts and with our recycling contracts, is we commit to a minimum tonnage to bring to the facility. And I have told both Waste and Republic, as we've had these discussions, that if this is the model we're going to follow, the days of the city committing a minimum tonnage for years in advance to bring to them is going to have to change also. Because that's one of the things, if we're continuing to lose money on it, I, I don't want to put us into a contract that we're required to continue to bring you that tonnage. And so one of the ways that we can protect ourselves is to not commit to a minimum tonnage. In other words, we'll bring you material if it makes sense for us to bring you material. If it doesn't make sense for us to bring you material, we won't bring you that material. But again, they, they, they don't like that because then that puts risk back onto them also as they're making capital investments into their recycling facilities. So it, it's a dynamic market that, that we are trying, and that's one of the ways in which we can do that is by not committing tonnage to them.
Yeah, I think that's great. I say you take it to the landfill, see where the negotiations start, right? I mean, that's their entire business model. You take away their supply, I'm sure they're going to come back with some more favorable terms.
I, I would hope so. One of the things that scares me though is like with our cardboard, we actually have people that are telling us, don't bring it to us. We, we don't want it. And so
In the landfill?
No, not to the landfill, but from a recycling standpoint. So we've already reached the point with some of these commodities where we have partners that we've partnered with for decades that have provided bids to us for this material. Now, sometimes those bids would go as low as $40 a ton and would be as high as $150 a ton. So there was market fluctuation. But we've actually reached a point where some of those are now saying, I just don't bring it. And so they're, they're doing it proactively to us as opposed to us telling us we won't bring it to you.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Mr. Bajay, I would urge you to be cautious because that would cause outrage in our community.
Yes.
We stop doing recycling. So as you market this, make sure that you know, you tell them exactly what needs to be put in the bin, do some magnet, do some sticker, encouraging our, our members of the community to do that before we do anything that's drastic like that.
Mr. Freeman.
Scott, thanks for the good news. I feel like I'm buried now. Looking at the forecast at 1819 on slide 29, this is recycling revenue. Now, if you're running two routes, and you can explain it to me, but if you're running the second route for recycling and it costs to deliver that service, does that mean that deficit or that budget line item is even more greater than 551,000 to run a second route to?
Well, there is cost associated with running
You're running that route today.
But you're running two routes
We're running
None of that changes.
Incrementally, as far as the current operations, that wouldn't change. That's an additional cost, if that's what you're asking.
Well, if you eliminated one route
Oh, yeah. If we eliminate, I mean, we theoretically, we could
It's Jeremy's point, if you eliminated
No, if we did a Jeremy's point, we weren't, and we weren't doing any blue barrels at all, then yeah, we would just have everybody, it'd just be a black barrel pickup and a black and a green, and that would be it.
Right.
So we would save, because I guess we still pick up the green though.
We do. And the greens, it's a whole nother story that we didn't bring up here, but green is also a very high tipping fee that has been increasing also.
Don't ask.
And that is a service though that we do charge for currently, the green barrel. We charge half of what we do for the black barrel, but the green barrel is seeing similar pressures, mostly because of contamination, and also because there's just not a market. So compost, there's, there's kind of a slug or a more supply coming in with compost. And so its value on the back end is not what it used to be. And again, when that value on the, on the back end of it becomes lower, the cost for the processor on the front end needs to go up because they're, they're not making the money off the sale of the commodity.
I, I guess just to follow up to my question with the, the deficit of 551,000 dollars in recycling revenue and the cost to deliver that service, it could actually be much higher or, that be the right word? For service?
In addition to this cost, there is the cost of picking it up, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I am.
Yes. There is, we're not showing that. This is just a contract.
Just the cost analysis.
This is the, the contractual, because we assumed, if we assume that we're going to be still picking up the blue barrels as we have from the beginning of this graph up the blue barrels as we have from the beginning of this graph through the end of this graph, that cost doesn't change.
Correct.
But to your point, if we just stopped all recycling pickup, we would save that route.
I wasn't suggesting, just to clarify, I was saying just take the blue bin, still pick it up and bring it to the dump. I'm not saying you stop picking up the blue barrel because then people would actually notice that we're not recycling, right? And if they don't notice, they're not paying attention. And the contract becomes favorable, and then you take it back to the recycling facility.
With people watching.
The other question is, are these costs being directly attributed to the line item for recycling on the utility bills? Are they being spread across?
Really, the recycling is kind of embedded into the black barrel. We don't charge for the blue barrel. So the costs associated with it, it kind of gets embedded into that black barrel.
And remind me, does the blue barrel cost additional, or can you opt not to have a blue barrel in our utility?
You have to opt. You can opt out of it, but there's no cost associated with the blue barrel. And even if you wanted a second blue barrel, there's no cost associated with that either. And that has been because we would make money off of it previously.
We encouraged it.
And so we encourage folks to recycle more.
So should we create a line item in our utility bill that says recycling and actually start charging people for this? That way, if they want to be conscious and they can recycle, then have at it. They can pay for it. Otherwise, it's going to the dump?
Yeah, that is one of the ideas that we have thought of. And I think one of the things that we're going to need to come back, whether it's through a committee process, and it's interesting, I've been thinking about it, you know, from our standpoint, it's, there's sustainability and transportation that we can come back to, but this also affects audit and finance because this becomes a financial issue also. And so between those two committees, we can have some of these conversations about what do we do with this material. Because sustainability, you know, there's three pillars to it. And one of those pillars is financial, and that's the most immediate thing that you feel with sustainability is the financial impact associated with it, the environmental benefits.
You do have some great ideas about how to expand your sustainability programs.
We do have some. We're just quickly moving through this slide.
Moving on, then.
So one of the projects that came up through Imagine Mesa, and to be honest, has been something that has been being discussed within the department previously, is food. Food waste specifically and how that can be converted into energy. So one of the discussions that we just had was the value of the commodity is only worth what somebody is willing to pay for it. And so looking at food waste, things that are happening nationwide, is they are taking food, putting it into anaerobic digesters, producing biogas, and then using that biogas either to produce onsite energy at the wastewater treatment plants, which, as you saw from the previous slides, are high-energy use facilities. Or another thing that has come forward over the last several years is to treat that to pipeline quality, put it into the natural gas system, and show its use in a natural gas vehicle. There is a thing called the Renewable Fuel Standard, which has associated with it these things that are called renewable identification numbers. So we discussed the RECs associated with solar, the renewable energy credits that SRP was paying an incentive for. Renewable identification numbers under the Renewable Fuel Standard are similar to a RAC, except they have more value to them currently. They are purchased by your large fuel producers, so your Chevrons, your Exons, those types of folks that are large producers, need to meet requirements for carbon emission reductions. And this helps them get that. They are basically buying compliance with these credits that are created. So we at the City of Mesa are unique, as we discussed through the CIP process when Beth was presenting. We own the solid waste utility. We own the wastewater utility. We own the natural gas utility. And we have a very large CNG fleet that collects the waste currently. So we have, you know, we were discussing, Candace had brought up, that we're in the process of converting over our fleet to CNG. So one of the things we're looking at, we've begun a feasibility study. We're working with our friends in water resources and energy resources, and we're just beginning the feasibility study of is there an ability to take material, pre-process it at the Center Street Yard, which is where our household hazardous waste facility is currently, create what's called a bio-slurry, bring that to an anaerobic digester, feed it into the digesters, increase the gas production, and then either use that for onsite energy or use that to power our vehicles. And that's one of the things that we are just beginning the feasibility study now, and we'll be coming back and reporting to you. We're doing a couple of field trips over the next couple of months. We'll be sending out an email, letting council members know if you're interested in attending these. In June, we're going to the San Francisco area, specifically East Bay MUD. The East Bay Municipal Utilities District has been doing this with fog, flat soils and grease and food waste for years. And we're going to tour, I believe it's three or four different wastewater facilities in the Bay Area that are currently doing this type of program. In addition to that, we're working with our partner Waste Management. Waste Management is doing a pilot project. Their pilot project is 60 to 85 tons of food per day that they are bringing, they are producing a bio-slurry, and they're bringing it to the LA County Sanitation District, who has, I believe it's like a 300 MGD wastewater plant, that they are taking that material and producing biogas with it. And so we're looking at sometime in May, doing a tour of the LA area. And then sometime in June, we'll be going to the San Francisco area and looking at how others are doing these types of programs. And then we'll be reporting back on this.
Scott, I love the idea of the anaerobic digestion, but scalable-wise, as far as producing pipeline-quality natural gas, to be able to scrub it, clean it, and then add the mercaptin, the stink, to it, is a... When you go through your analysis, or at least on the front end right now as you're looking at it, is our cost per BTU comparable to what it's going to cost to scrub it and everything else?
Yeah, the wildcard factor, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, the factor that comes in is the Renewable Fuel Standard and the value of these renewable identification numbers, so RINs. We've had a couple of conference calls and webinars that we've been participating in, workshops that we've gone to. Currently, a D3 RIN, which would come from an anaerobic digester without any food waste put into it, has a value, and you'll understand this, of about $30 to $35 in MMBTU, which is a significant value. Your typical value, when I talk to Frank McCray, he'll say $3 in MMBTU is a number for the actual commodity. But in addition to that, there's the Renewable Identification Number, where you have oil companies that are purchasing compliance, essentially. And that's where there's a real value to it. The issue is, and we just had a conference call yesterday talking about this, is there's some uncertainty with the Renewable Fuel Standard and the current administration and how they're going to implement this. This was actually something that was put in place by the Bush administration, was implemented through the Obama administration, and now with the Trump administration, there's some question marks in regards to how this will be. They've talked about capping RIN values. They've given waivers to some of the smaller refineries, which reduces the demand for the RINs, which then reduces the price because you have more supply than what you have the demand. But it's interesting because ethanol is a huge part that meets this Renewable Fuel Standard, and that's produced in the Midwest by farmers who are, who were voting for Trump in the election. And so changes to this Renewable Fuel Standard might have a negative effect on the farmers also. But you've kind of got two lobby groups between the oil industry and the farming industry that are not in agreement on what should happen with this fuel standard. So that's one of the big question marks that we're trying to evaluate. We've had conversations with Scott Butler. We actually are now, there is a weekly newsletter that's going out on the Renewable Fuel Standard. I'm looking forward to getting my first copy of that tomorrow and taking a look and trying to track where this is going to be. That's where the real value of this would come from, is from that Renewable Fuel Standard. And what you have to show is that it's used in a vehicle. And because we have a large CNG fleet currently, we, and it's all within what I've referred to as the family, because it doesn't leave Mesa, we can show that. And then we don't have to involve any of the other utilities. And we don't have to get, what a lot of people run into is you have to find a broker who will match up the supply and the demand for it. And that broker takes, you know, money off the top of it from it. We have, if we can produce the supply and have our own demand for it, we don't need to have these brokers involved in it. The other thing you can do, though, is produce renewable energy from it. You can run it through a COGEN. We currently have a COGEN there, but we don't do treatment upfront of it. And I think that's one of the issues that we're running into with being able to operate that COGEN. And that's what we're hoping to learn as we go through these field trips, so to speak, as we go to other facilities. And so one of the questions I might come back to you is, we set a renewable energy goal. If we can produce four, eight, or 10 million kilowatt-hours of renewable energy a year, but there's a cost to it, if that cost is less than what we would be able to get it from an SRP through a community solar, is that what we're interested in doing? And so, you know, this might be a situation where there is a little bit of a premium associated with it at the end. But if there is a large amount of renewable energy that comes with it, is it council's desire to do that type of project? And I can't, all the numbers that we have right now, there's so many assumptions, and there's so many ranges that are in there. That's why we need to do the feasibility studies so that we can come back to you with some real numbers and really start talking about, this would be the capital cost associated with it, this would be the operation and maintenance cost associated with it, and this would be the avoided cost associated with it.
And on the fuel standards, maybe it's an opportunity to lobby or to work with APGA and our friends in DC, Boggs, Patton, or Patton-Boggs?
Yes, Patton-Boggs. That's who's going to be sending me this update letter or newsletters that have different articles of where we're standing with the Renewable Fuel Standard.
And Scott, I'm assuming that we're already working with our congressional delegation on this, on these types of issues, items?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, yes. But this is exactly the type of feedback we need from council as you meet with members of the congressional delegation, as Mr. Boucher and his team are looking at where we can affect federal policy on this. As he alluded to, a lot is changing in DC right now, and a lot of the agency direction is changing. So we're trying to keep up with that. We're lucky to be associated with a firm in DC that has a very broad grasp of these issues. And so Squire Patton-Boggs, as a global firm, is working on these kind of issues with multiple clients. And so we're able to benefit from their expertise. They have a whole department with hundreds of attorneys that work just on this type of, just this type of legislation, this type of policy. So we're going to tap into all the resources that we have.
Next slide?
Please.
All right. Another Imagine Mesa idea is bulk collection. I think this will go relatively quick. There was desire from the committee to increase this service. This is a service, when people call in, that sometimes we have to push them back. We currently offer it two days a week. We're looking at offering it four days a week as a pilot while I hire a temp employee. We don't need any additional equipment. We can use the current equipment that we have. We'll just need one new employee, and we're going to do that on temporary basis. See if the demand is there for the service, if it's a sustained demand going forward. If it is, then we would come back next year, probably ask for a permanent employee and implement this. It's full-time, that we would do four-day-a-week bulk pickup. The other thing is, we're rebranding the Clean Sweep/Green Sweep program to the Neighborhood Cleanup Program. Some of the feedback that we got was that Clean Sweep/Green Sweep wasn't real clear on what that actually is. But I think Neighborhood Cleanup is pretty straightforward. It's an ability to clean up your neighborhood. And so we're rebranding that and really looking at marketing that more and make sure that we're utilizing that program to its fullest extent and making sure residents are more aware of it. Challenges? Now, we talked about a lot of this already, the recycling market risk increases. I think we talked about that a lot. Our barrel replacement program, so we do have, you know, similar to the other utilities, we have our aging infrastructure. Our infrastructure becomes more of our bins and barrels. And so, you know, we're looking at how we can keep up with barrels that break over time, and that is a pressure on the utility. Growth, of course, you know, as it continues to grow, we need to add more operators. We need to add more equipment. And then tipping-free increases that we see, and then there's just a minor, you know, call-out-pay policy changes and CNG maintenance for our fueling station that we have there. Next one is our sources and uses slide. You'll see, as we discussed previously, that the uses were higher than what the sources were over the last couple of years, but we're now coming out of that. And that's where, you know, as explained, we look at the enterprise fund as a whole. Some come out, some go in, and so we're looking at the enterprise fund as a whole. But of course, the pressures that we just discussed, those are going to have a direct effect on our sources and uses as we move forward. Then I believe our last slide is the financial summary that we have. If there's any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer any of those other questions we may have.
Thank you, Scott. Council, any additional questions for Mr. Boucher? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quick, yeah, very.
We could talk a lot about this.
It's been a while since anybody asked me to sprint. More of a shot putter than a sprinter.
Good morning. I'm Frank McCray with the Energy Resource Department. John Petroff has joined me to the right, and got some other members of the management team. Before I dig into the presentation, I would like to highlight that April is Safe Digging Month, and so we can all help to protect our underground infrastructure by calling 811 before you dig. We also have some more information on our website, so you can click on the 811 tab. That damage prevention program is one example of the role that utilities play in public safety. So I know we get a lot of discussion and conversation and focus on fire and police departments having a role in public safety, but the utilities do as well, and that's one example. The matrix on Slide 37 shows a real close correlation between what we do, our priorities in energy resources, being the way we safely and reliably and economically provide services to our customers. Those closely correlate to the council's strategic priorities as well. So Slide 38 is some of our notable accomplishments in fiscal year 1718. Appreciate everybody's contribution to help us celebrate our 100-year anniversary, but those awards were also pretty special to us as well. They're a testament to the way our peers view how well we provide services to our customers. Their criteria involve safety, reliability, how we develop our workforce, how we maintain our systems, the integrity of our systems, et cetera. So. Slide 39 goes to our performance metrics that we are using. And again, these relate to the safety and reliability and efficiency. In this instance, we're using affordability as a surrogate for efficiency, and you can see those. I won't go into any details on the targets. But if there's any issue with where we've not met our targets, I'd be happy to elaborate on those. Would like to mention on that slide that our affordability, we use SRP as a benchmark for how we compare on our residential customer and their bills, and we compare very favorably. All core tiles of our customers are substantially below SRP's comparable services, so want to emphasize that. So Slide 40, as well as Slide 42, are graphs that show our revenue history, and the two distinct sources of revenues are energy cost supply adjustment factor and then our other revenues, including non-rate revenues. And this was a particular point of discussion that Councilmember Freeman and I had in our Audit and Finance Committee about, we're seeing decreases in natural gas costs, and so are those being reflected in our customers' bills? And as you can see in graphs, our Slides 40 and 42, our total revenues, which is a pretty good reflection of what our costs are, you can see those historically going down. On the electric site, it's about a 1% per year on average decrease since the '04-'05 timeframe. And what's contributed to that is we've had our energy supply costs, which are heavily influenced by natural gas surplus. They've been going down while some of our other cost components, the rate revenues, have gone up. You will see one spike there, up to the $36 million. That was a unique accounting adjustment. We had funded some capital projects dealing with the Light Rail project, where we're putting an infrastructure in advance of, but in concert with the Light Rail project. Those costs came in lower than what we had funded, so those monies came back to the electric utility, and they chose to account for those as a revenue. And so that's why you see that spike. That's not a reflection of an increase in cost. So let's go to the next slide. Performance measures on the gas side. Again, we've had a couple of anomalies where we haven't met our performance metrics. I can go into explaining those events if you'd like. On the gas side, we're competitive, excuse me, we're competitive with Southwest Gas, but the way they manage their gas supply adjustment factor mechanism will sometimes cause... cause their rates and bills to come lower than ours, and that's the state where we're at right now, so. Okay. Again, the same type of information on Slide 42 with gases we just talked about with electric. The, the natural gas supply cost going down is a little bit more pronounced on the gas side than it is on the electric side, but we've also had a little bit higher increases in gas rates over the last couple of years. But you can see there's a trend going down in the last 10 or so years, and that's about point, two tenths of 1% of a decrease per year overall. Our challenges that we face are pretty, pretty much the same as most of the utilities within the city or, or in the energy utility industry. We do have a kind of a unique situation compared to some utilities across the country. We have a very heavy mix of residential customers. We don't have a lot of commercial industrial customers, and we also live in a desert climate where the, the weather swings can have a significant influence on our revenues, especially as we've tried to recover a large part of our fixed costs through consumption-based charges. So our revenue rate proposals have kind of reflected trying to start recovering more and more of our fixed costs through those fixed charges on our bills. For the proposed '18-'19 budget, it's really a pretty, pretty closely reflected of what's we've been doing in fiscal year 1718. We are facing some, some challenges. We, we use a lot of bond funding for our capital program, and so we're having to stretch the authorizations that we had voters approve in 2014 to a couple more years than we would otherwise plan. Fortunately, some of our ability to do that is because we've, we've managed our costs, our projects very well. Downtown revitalization, while it certainly has a, a lot of potential positive attributes, when it comes to the electric utility and being able to accommodate new customers with new types of equipment, may cause us to incur quite a bit of additional cost to reconfigure our electric system, convert overhead to underground, and increase the size of transformers, et cetera. So we're prepared to do that, but depending on how fast and how sudden it happens, could cause us some financial challenges where we have to restructure how we do things. We may, we may deplete our bond authorization sooner than we otherwise would. The next couple of slides show our financial trends with the total sources and uses of funds. There's nothing really unique there except for in 1314, you see our uses significantly above our total sources. That's where we took some money and applied it on a cash basis rather than funding those capital investments with bonds. We took some money out of the fund balance and used that to fund some infrastructure that we put in place commensurate with the construction of the light rail through Central Mesa. So you can see after that, that expenditure and setting aside those funds, it, it came back to a normal relationship between uses and sources. The financial summary in the next slide, there's nothing really unique or inordinate about that. Our operating expenditures are staying fairly steady. Our ECAF expenditures and our ECAF revenues, there's typically tries to be a dollar-for-dollar offset there. Where there is an over-recovery, it's flowed through into the next year, so the dollar-for-dollar may not happen immediately. It may happen over time, but it does happen. The natural gas five-year utility trend there, again, there's, there's nothing too unique there to talk about, nothing too inordinate. And again, the, the gas utility financial summary. So with that, I think I've spent about 10 seconds per slide, thereabout, so I think that qualifies as a sprint.
Thank you, Frank. Mr. Freeman?
Congratulations on your safety record for both of them. I, I saw that, that's really good work, keeping your employees safe.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, council. Any additional questions or comments? Appreciate it. Does that, no, we have, I'm sorry, now Candace, thank you. Candace is going to come, thank you, Candace.
Hi, Mayor and Council. So that, we wanted to make sure that we, each department was able to come up and talk to you about their opportunities and their challenges and what's going on in their department, and then we kind of roll it all together for you. So just as we bring this all together, we start looking at rates and adjustments to rates that we look at on an annual basis. Some of the things we do want to talk about is when we're talking about them here, we're talking about residential, usually we're always talking about residential, but it's also commercial on some of those cases as well, and we simplify it very much. So when we say a three and a half percent rate increase, that's kind of a simplified version. There's actually a lot of intricacies about how that gets rolled out and developed. There was a question or a comment, I think, earlier about our water and residential and tiers, and that tiers still continue though, so there, there's four different tiers in our water residential rates. And so whenever we're looking at this and we're looking at impacts, we're looking at the impact to our median homeowner that we use on the homeowner comparison, and so those are always for that. For those who have excess water usage, they would have a larger impact because they're using more water than the average user. So how things are implemented does make a difference. When we pull all these together, again, we're going to go over what the recommended adjustments are as well as some options. Again, Attachment 3 has all of the detail on what the staff recommendation options were. The revenue impact is listed here on this slide by category or by program. That was the impact of the staff recommended adjustments. When we look at how that impacts our average residential customer, again, this is what was on that comparison that was mentioned earlier, where we compared ourselves to other municipalities around the city, around the valley. This is the monthly impact and the annual impact of what was recommended by staff to Audit, Finance, and Enterprise Committee. This slide here has the staff recommendations that was made to Audit, Finance, and Enterprise Committee, and so as you look through here and how to read this, going across, you can see, we've really kind of brought it down to just the total sources and total uses, so that really goes back to all those slides that you saw. You saw one from each program where they showed you total sources and total uses, those financial statements. And so these really brings it down to say, what does the fund as a whole do for this? And again, in the enterprise fund, we have the utilities as well as the nonutility areas like our convention center and so forth, and those are also in Attachment 3.
Candace, does this slide reflect the staff recommendation that the, the previous slide?
This is the original.
This is the original, yeah, so.
So the slide previous to this that showed the monthly and annual impact on consumers, that's the, the chart that we're looking at right now?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. So all of this goes together, and then we will walk through the scenarios that we were asked to prepare from the Audit, Finance, and Enterprise Committee. So to kind of give you an overview first, though, of what the impact was of the original recommendation to the committee, this would be the financial sheet that would go along with that. So when we call it Scenario A, that is the original recommendation to the committee, and the way to read this is kind of the rates are listed below in the green areas, and so you can see the original recommendation was a three and a half percent increase on water, 4% wastewater, three and a half on solid waste residential, and a two and a half on solid waste commercial. So that was the, I'm sorry, that was, excuse me, that was what we implemented last year, and then if you go to '18-'19, you can see what was recommended for this year. It was basically the same for water, wastewater, and solid waste with the commercial side of solid waste only at 2% for this year. So the '18-'19 column was the original recommendation to the committee. Now, the way that you read this, we kind of mentioned earlier that we look at the enterprise fund as a whole, and we manage as a whole, and we're looking at that reserve balance to be no lower than 8% over the forecast period. That is the line that's in the middle, where it says ending reserve balance percent, and you can see for planning purposes and for budgeting purposes, we like to stay at the 10%, and so that's why you'll see the lowest year up there is at about 10.4% out in '23-'24. And so that's what we're talking about when we're talking about reserve balances.
That's just a little over one month.
Correct.
One than a week or so, maybe five or six weeks out of reserve.
And then the second thing that we look at, so there's two things that go with our policy on how we try to, when we do rate reviews. One is the reserve balance through the forecast period. The second one is to smooth the rates, as we mentioned earlier, that there aren't any rate spikes, high or low, there isn't a large variance over the next few years. And so you'll see for recommendations, that's why you'll see, for example, on the water, 3.5, that would be the anticipated 3.5 over the next few years so that we can maintain the 10.4. You do see that the reserve balance is reducing. Again, what that means is our, our uses are greater than our sources each year, but we're slowly building up the revenues so that we can accommodate the uses when we get out to '23-'24. So that's the philosophy behind where, how we look at the rates and how we do our rate recommendation for adjustments. That is Scenario A. We're going to call that Scenario A today, which is the original recommendation. When we went to Audit, Finance, and Enterprise Committee, they did ask us to run a, a separate scenario, and really two, asked us, the, the feedback we got was to one run scenario, which was if, what happened if we reduced the rates 1% from where we are today, so a reduction of 1% across the board? And then the other feedback that we got received was options. And so we have two options for you here today to discuss. One is Scenario B, that is reducing the rates across the board, 1%. You'll notice that we did not change solid waste commercial, we only changed the others. Solid waste commercial does have to make sure that we are staying within market so that we're not accused of using our residential services to offset our commercial because we compete in the commercial market, and so we didn't do any adjustments to those. So we did adjust the other ones. So what you see as an impact to that, again, the other thing that we changed is our original recommendation kept our fund balances at 10% or above. The financial policies do allow for a minimum of 8%, so we put in, we changed it to 8%, so that would kind of relieve some of the pressure in the later years, just to see what the minimum rate adjustments we would need to maintain that. If we reduce the utility rates in '18-'19 by 1% of where they sit today, our estimates for the next four years would be, water rate adjustments would be needed at about 5.25% per year, wastewater at 5.75, solid waste residential at 5.25. So that's where you see the changes. Also, below in the light green would be the electric and gas, where we did, we did kind of cross the board on those as well. So what this does show you is the impact of the adjustments to rates that we do today and how those impact the years that follow. When we're trying to do a target year of, in this case, we would be at our 8% minimum reserve balance forecasted for '22-'23, so four years out.
Candace, all of these forecasts with the asterisk, I note, they all assume an economic downturn in 2020.
In 2021.
Can you remind us what, how much of a downturn we're anticipating or planning for?
On this one, so for, on the general governmental side in 2021, we were estimating about a $9 million impact on the general governmental side. On the utility side, it's not as great of an impact only because they are utilities that people need on a daily basis, and so it's really your discretionary use that you would see. It's a slight, I don't have the number offhand, I apologize, but it does occur in, in 2021, again.
Percentage, mayor, council percentage-wise, it's, it's small.
So we did about a 3, 3% to 4% in the general governmental. We reduced that a little bit because of the necessity of the utilities, so it was about a 1.5%, but it came out to about 4, $5 million, close to the same as that, but because of the percentage rate, it's, it's still significant because of the, the amount of the enterprise fund.
Thank you.
And that is included in all of these, so everything stays consistent between the scenarios. The only difference is what our target was for the reserve balances and then the, any adjustments to '17-'18. And then what we do is smooth, smooth the rest of the years, what would those years look like if, if that action was taken. So this is what we're calling Scenario B, which was the request from the committee to do that. To bring back, we were also asked for different options, and so Option C would be a variation, if you will, on the original recommendation from staff, and so that really just has, again, lowering our lowest reserve balance to the 8%, making sure that we stay above 8% versus the 10% in the original scenario, and then looking at what, how low we could kind of go in '18-'19 and still maintain some of the rates at, you know, not above a 4.5% or 5%. So it was kind of a, kind of in the middle there. And so in this particular scenario in '18-'19, if adjustments were made to the rates in water at a 2%, 2.5% for wastewater, and then the 2% for solid waste residential, you would see that the impact over the next four years would be in that probably 3.85, you know, so 3.9, 4.4 between the water, wastewater, and solid waste over those particular years. So it does relieve some of the adjustment in '18-'19, but it does, again, increase what we would project to be needed in '19, '20 through '22, '23. Those are the three scenarios that we have that we were asked to bring back for this particular meeting, and so we would open it up to questions or discussion and direction.
Mr. Glover?
Well, I know Audit and Finance, it wasn't just these three scenarios. We actually asked you to look at what would a reduction, 2% and 3%, which you sent out yesterday, and that every, all the council received as well. And I, I support a reduction, I would have to say at least a reduction by at least 2%, if not greater than that.
Is that the right one? This is the scenario that was sent out yesterday that was requested just recently, and this is showing.
Well, it was requested at the Audit and Finance meeting. I think my colleagues will back me up on that one, Candace.
This is the scenario that was sent out to council yesterday, and it is here for discussion and look at. If you were to reduce the current rates today overall at a negative 2%, going, going backwards in our rates from last year, you would see the impact that we would project going forward would be above 6% on wastewater and about 5.8 on water and the other, the solid waste.
Why would we decrease rates this year only to shift the burden of massive rate increases in future years?
Well, I think what it really comes down to is what council's priorities are. You don't have to increase rates every year. That's what staff recommendation is, but council's the one who sets the priority.
Well, sure, but I, by the charter, we have to mean an 8% reserve balance, is that correct?
Our financial, adopted financial policies, council's financial policies call for us to stay above 8%.
Is it why we agree to what about rate increases?
I still don't understand why we wouldn't smooth out rate increases. If our priority is to spend money, then it makes more sense to smooth out the rate of increases. Why would we wait to drop a 6% increase next year but decrease rates by 2% this year? This doesn't have any logic to me.
I think from my colleagues on the Audit and Finance Committee, we wanted to see what we could do to help our low-income residents, especially in Mesa, that are in the service territory of all water, gas, and electric, and see what we can do to help. And again, each year, council can look and see what our demand is. We don't necessarily need to spend all that money, and again, it's council's priority to where we want to have that percentage. We're the ones who adopt the policy.
I haven't seen anything about how the ASU building impacts these rates.
So Mayor and Council, it's built into the forecast here, and I think that was going to be, I mean, we can talk about, and that was probably in the economic investment.
Correct, and Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, in Attachment 3 is the detail, so then this is the summed up of the, of the full enterprise fund, but in Attachment 3 on each one of the programs themselves, the utilities, you can see the transfers out section, and there are two different transfers out. One is the transfer out to the general fund, and the other one is a transfer out to the economic investment fund.
Correct. Even going back to the very beginning, original rate proposal that was presented to the Audit and Finance, we had built in $6 million a year placeholder for all the improvements related to ASU, and so that's, we were able to provide that into the financial forecast at the 3.5%, which is consistent with what we had predicted or forecast from the prior year. So without impacting future rates that had been previously, that were previously known by the council, we were able to absorb the $6 million through additional growth in the system as well as some debt financing savings that we were able to achieve. So we used, we took those components as well as what we anticipate the cost that would be needed for the capital improvements for ASU, and we've included those in all the scenarios from the very beginning. So it's already been built in from the beginning.
So how much of the utility rate increases are due to the fact that we're building an ASU building?
So there's, as I said, there's $6 million a year that's included in all the forecasts, including the forecast that holds the rates the same that we had shown council from prior years. So if you look at it from the prior year forecast going forward, the $6 million did not increase the rates because we had, we were able to have savings from the debt finance or managing debt as well as growth, additional growth in the system. Now, if the question is, what does $6 million do to the overall? Now, if the question is, what does $6 million do to the overall system? This is a $400 million in revenues coming into the system. So $6 million of additional expenses, less than 2% of the total revenues that are coming into the system.
So at what rate would the utilities be decreased if we didn't build the ASU building?
So six, you said 6 million, I can't remember what the number you guys used for, what 1% was worth in revenues is about what?
About 3 and 1/2 million.
3 and 1/2, so less than 2%.
Well, I think less than 2% of the revenues is what we're talking about.
Well, in 2% rate, if you, the question is, if we took the 6 million out, you know, where, what would happen? Frankly, most of it would probably, as we have shown in the first scenario, would just stay in the fund balance. But overall, I mean, if you were to find, if you had $6 million, it's equivalent to what it costs, the rate is of about less than 2%. Am I saying that right, Brian? Is it more or less? But again, council say, this is, we can either look at it as an expense or an investment. That's how we, we've looked at it. It's hard to look at the utilities, it's difficult. We know the rates are, have impact across the city, a variety of individuals. But it is also the one generator we have. And I think frankly, the outcome, because we're able to expand our utility systems across the city, you are seeing lowered tax, property tax rates because we have higher amount of new value that's coming into the city. A lot of that is being driven by the fact that we have the infrastructure to support a lot of the industry and manufacturing, as well as new subdivisions that are coming online. So that generates additional, both property, property rate decrease that will be experienced because the values and new construction is significant. And with new construction and new activity, obviously, we've seen significant increases in sales tax. So this is the one area where we have the ability to create the catalyst, to the investment in the city, to help generate income that's maybe not shown up here in utility rates, but it certainly, I think, is reflective in new growth and additional growth, both in the property tax values as well as the sales tax. And so it's been, the history of Mesa going back, and I think we talked about in the Economic Investment Fund, going back to 2010, where we've used this fund as the way to do investments in the city. But certainly, it's an impact. It has, I mean, it's just like any expense in here, it's $6 million. If you, what would a $6 million do? We would, we tried to be very careful to manage it so it didn't impact the rates that had previously been identified, so it wasn't creating any additional pressure from what had already been identified in this utility from prior years. And I think we were able to do that. And again, a lot of that is both growth as well as savings in our debt, debt payments.
You believe it's sustainable to compound annually utility rates at 3.5% in perpetuity?
I think it's difficult, but as you saw, our costs from SRP are going up 5% a year for water. Chemical costs are going up. To expand our system, and what's driving this, the biggest number that's driving here is not $6 million in investment in the Economic Consent Fund. The largest increases are in debt service, and that's, you're bringing on these large plants. We're now having to, we're seeing that principal interest payment going on.
This is just the slide that we had, just to show you what the recommendation was for last year.
Is there a utility rate adjustment scenario that does not include the ASU building?
All factors were held, were held constant in all of these scenarios. The only things that we changed in the scenarios was changing the reserve balance target and then the 17, or the 1819 adjustments to the rates, so that we held everything else constant.
So how am I supposed to see the impact of the ASU building if there's no utility rate adjustment scenarios that don't include the ASU building?
Well, I guess we'd like, maybe if the council, I mean, we presumed, because the direction from the council was to build ASU, just we, just like it is to go build a plant, we included in the scenario.
Does the ASU building increase utility rates?
From our prior year rates that we have shown, no, it does not.
Assuming that you're going to keep increasing rates at 3.5%?
As we have prior to the issue discussion, those were already established rate increases. So it doesn't change the scenario from prior to discussion about ASU. It doesn't change the rate increases that had previously been shown and had been discussed. The rate increases that you see, the original rate increases, the 3 and 1/2%, frankly, came out of our discussion, and we talked about this, is that if we were going to take on $580 million of capital improvements throughout the system, this was going to be the impact, along with other increases in water and chemicals, that was going to be the impact to the system overall. And so that scenario has been consistent. We tried to be very consistent with holding that from the very beginning. So the idea that how did you, you know, how do we take on ASU? And we've said, we were going to absorb that into the existing rate plan, increased plan, because we've seen savings in debt and we've seen additional growth higher than we expected. It's very similar to the same reason we were able to absorb the venue and Mesa Center for Higher Education. We took the savings from debt financing and we paid for a total of 16, what is my number? 10, 12 and 6 or something like that?
Yes.
10, $16 million worth of improvements to those two facilities for higher education. And we absorbed that inside of the enterprise fund. What, now, I think what we've shown here is there is some capacity to, you know, again, every year we're going to evaluate this. And I think Councilman Glover is right, every year we have the opportunity to evaluate this. We're showing you the long-term forecast because we want, in utilities, because of the long lead time on capital projects and other items, we need to show you that five-year perspective. But I do think there is an opportunity, if we want to show, if we could show the, just the 2%, that the rate increase that we were looking for, the 3 and 1/2%, probably could be adjusted downward. We could, we could still come within our target. We ended up that, even at the 3 and 1/2%, we saw that we ended up at over 10%. So we can reduce that down for planning purposes. For now, we could reduce the rate increase from 3 and 1/2% to 2%. And then next year, we'll take another look at, you know, no one's saying, there's not a mandate to do the 3.8% next year, but we'll look at it again, we'll see how growth is taking place, we'll continue to look for opportunities for reducing costs in our, and remember, this is a fixed asset operation. So a lot of these costs are big assets, are big chunky expenses. But we can continue to look at ways to try to bring that 3.8, 4.35. It'd be nice to get all those closer to 3 or under 3, even next year. But right now, for planning purposes, what we know, we could reduce the 3 and 1/2 down to 2, when you see the other numbers there, and reduce the increase. And again, that still allows us to deliver on the, building out the Economic Consent Fund, Investment Fund.
Mr. Thompson.
And I think to Jeremy's point too, on going back to the rate adjustments, you know, if we're going to hit, or if we're predicting in 2021, a blip in the economy, the last thing I think we want to do is really hit people with a 5.8% increase. And so I'm, I'm more favorable to the smoothing of the rates at the, you know, as in Scenario C or something of that magnitude. A huge jump in a rate increase when people are probably going to be, hopefully, we won't have a long-term recession like we did, maybe it'll just be a blip on the map. But to me, that's the wrong time to really be hitting people on the, on the utility rates.
And my assumption with the IGA was that we would pay for ASU if it didn't increase rates or the sales tax. So to make the assumption that we wouldn't do utility rate adjustment scenario without ASU, it's not a fair comparison to me because you have to bake those into those rates. And further, I don't know why we would decrease the rates this year only to substantially increase the rates in future years. I mean, there's no logic behind that, other than to say, look, we just built ASU, we reduced the utility rates, and there's no new sales tax. Other than that being some form of a PR, I don't know what else the point is in decreasing rates this year, only to shift that burden to next year and all the other years.
You know, I, I think we're asking the wrong question, frankly. I think that the question we ought to be asking is if we did know economic development in our downtown, if we didn't do anything to try to increase and promote our utility system, what is the long-term economic impact on rate payers in that scenario? And so I think we have an interesting business model in the city of Mesa. We are, we don't have a primary property tax because our city fathers 70 years ago said, we're going to finance city government on the back of utility revenues. So that, those are the cards that were dealt, and that's how we have to play. And I think, again, looking at the scenarios that have been presented to us, the, the income that comes from our utilities right now, $370 million. In the next few years, that'll increase to $450 million. The idea of having an economic development fund that siphons off 5 to 6 to 7 million dollars from that is so statistically irrelevant that it does not provoke a utility increase, a rate increase. But rather, like I say, I think the more significant impact would be not doing any economic development to promote and encourage additional economic activity and additional utility customers in our downtown. If we're concerned about keeping pressure off of rate payers, we need to grow the system so that we have more customers that are paying more into the system. We have this, this tension as a result of the, the system that we have, where we rely on utility rates, where we have this, this tale of two cities, an aging system in, in a large part of our town that has brakes and requires a lot of maintenance. On the other hand, a brand-new, fast-growing, significant demands for growth in another, another part of our city. So we have a unique set of challenges. We also have the voters that have approved in 2014, a half a billion dollars in bonds for utilities, telling us that they want us to meet the demands of having both an aging and a growing community. And so that's the mandate that we have from our voters, is to not shut things down and just not encourage growth or respond to the demands. So I think that, unless we do dramatically change our system by shifting to a, a primary property tax system, which I don't think the voters will approve, we have to, I think, build our utility base. And that's how we're going to lessen the, the rate pressure on our, on our customers. Now, on, so that, on the other side, I acknowledge that water is, it costs more than we would like it to in our city. And so I think we need to be sensitive to that and increase rates only when we absolutely have to. I think we also ought to look at bolstering our utility assistance fund for the low-income folks in our, in our city that this would present a particular hardship for. I think we ought to revisit the ABC fund and how we allocate those funds. To me, it makes sense to tie that, when I'm, if I'm feeling philanthropic, when I'm paying my, my city utility bill and I want to throw in a few extra dollars to help those who might be at risk of having their utility shut off, I think that's the appropriate time to, to address that. So I would encourage us to look at that and to bolster that. But I do agree that we need to, if we are to increase rates, we have to do it in a way that's not going to promote a dramatic spike a year or two from now. So for those reasons, I, I favor Scenario C that's been presented to us. Times are good right now, and I think we ought to reflect that. We ought to err on the side of being optimistic and hoping that an economic downturn doesn't come, but if it does, that we will respond at the appropriate time. Given that things are good right now, I think we probably can be more modest in the rate increases that have been proposed over the past few years and by staff initially. So my thinking right now would be to endorse Scenario C.
To clarify, isn't A the scenario that smoothed it out, not Scenario C? If you're saying times are good, Scenario C is the smallest increase in this fiscal year, and it shifts the burden to future years.
Correct.
Times are good, wouldn't you want to absorb the cost increase in the good years?
No, I think, because, because things are good now, I think we don't have to increase rates as dramatically as staff has initially suggested. So that's why I'd, I'd endorse Scenario C. Now, Scenario, I think if things continue to be good, then we can have the same conversation next year. And if our fund balance is still in the 20s, and we can, we don't think that we need to have a more aggressive rate increase, then, this is a conversation that we're going to have every year. But I think like, like right now, I'm, I'm willing to err on the side of optimism and to put off a more significant rate increase.
I fail to see the reason why we wouldn't smooth out the rate increase if we know in five years that our fund balance is going to drop to 8%.
Well, the, we don't know that, we're anticipating that, and part of that is based on an anticipation that there's going to be a downturn in the economy in 2021. So if we knew exactly what the economy was going to be like for the next several years, you know, we'd, we'd be unique. I don't, we can estimate it.
No, I'm, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, I was, the question was being asked. We don't have to make that decision. It would help, obviously, if we get that direction generally, we can head in that direction. So, so that we anticipate as we go forward in the, towards the, when's the hearing on this, May?
The hearing is, the, the public hearing is on May 21st.
Yeah.
Then the, the direction that we would need would be the time to prep for any introduction of the ordinance. So it can, we can introduce the ordinance before the public hearing, we can introduce it at the time of the public hearing or after. The deadline on introducing the ordinance just affects the effective date. But the public hearing itself would still be held on May 21st regardless.
But it's also good to get this information out as soon as possible. And to the mayor's point, council, we would like to come back to you and present some ideas on how we could increase the funds that we have available to assist those who may be impacted at the lowest levels. And, and Mayor mentioned something about the ABC funds. The ABC funds today are allocated as part of the human services funding process. But if council desired, we could make maybe a bigger portion of that or some portion of that more directly related to the utility assistance. And frankly, there is some confusion out there because I think some, I think SRP, that's how they use their, I don't know what their fund is called, but that, and so people sometimes are confused about our ABC fund and what it goes towards. And we've tried to do better at explaining that goes to, I mean, it goes to great purposes, nonprofits. But the question is, would you rather maybe set aside more of that to go towards assisting with utilities? And we, by the way, use many of those nonprofits to assist us in doing the eligibility determination, plus they help do other wraparound services.
Mr. Loner. Thank you. You know, I'm supportive of Scenario C, and I agree that council does set priorities in terms of what we, how we move forward. So I would advocate for that. But we might want to work with Mesa Ken, because that's really what they do, is they provide utilities assistance. And I also believe that we need to reinvest in our community. And so I'm certainly supportive of the, the economic development fund for reinvestment. So I'm going to be supporting Proposal C.
Mr. Thompson.
I agree with Jeremy. I, I'm more in support of Scenario A. I think it gives the long-term stability and the long-term confidence, I guess, in the consumer, on the, you know, on the residential and commercial side, of knowing what your rates are going to be into the future, which I think is important, especially if you're a business looking to, to move into, into a city, you want to know with confidence what your rates are going to be into the future. And it's, to me, it's a more smooth, it's a more smooth scenario, so much more than, than dropping the rates and then drastically raising the rates. I support Scenario A, but also I just want to understand, on the, on the ABC funds, a portion of that's being used for the K-12, right? Because it's being shifted to the human services and then from human services.
Kevin. Pre-K.
I think, I mean, pre-K, I'm sorry, pre-K.
You can answer that.
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson. Last year, $60,000 of the ABC funds were allocated to the Mesa K-Ready program. This year, the recommendation is that CDBG dollars be used. So it is not being included in the recommendations this year.
Okay. And I want to say ABC collects a little over $100,000? Am I close?
110, I thought.
110, something like that, right? Yeah. But I think that's combined with the general funds allocation for human services, and then that's how, but again, that was just one option as possibly, I think we, we have right now, $50,000.
Yeah, we did institute a couple, I think it's been two years now.
At least.
That we, at least, that we instituted $50,000 was set aside for utility assistance, specifically, we don't administer it, but we administer it through the nonprofits. And then the, the folks are receiving credit vouchers, and that's how they actually pay their bill, is through a credit back to us. And so we do have that set up at this point.
But, so the option is, we could increase that amount.
Expand that.
And maybe use some of those ABC funds to do that.
That was my thought. And I know this is a competitive process, it goes through a lot of community vetting and staff recommendations, so, you know, we're not going to side that now. That'll be, a lot of folks will weigh in on that. But I, I would, speaking for myself, I would, I, like I said, I think it would be clarity in the minds of, of those who are contributing to ABC if they knew that when they were making this donation as part of their utility payment, I think they do link that to helping folks with utilities. So I, I think if we put out an RFP to Mesa Can or whoever is administering this program and said we would consider increasing the allocation for helping low-income folks with their utility bills, I, I think I would probably be supportive of that next year when we're making those allocations.
Mayor, just so you know, today, we just, kind of part of our process, we just, we've already set aside the 50,000 for Mesa Can. And it's not, I say Mesa Can, but I think the Salvation Army participates, Newly participates, I don't remember all, but it's a coalition of groups that participate.
I have a question. Oh, this year we voted to amortize the PSPRS debt from 20 years to 25 years, right?
30 to 25.
What?
You're right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that cost the city how much money in added interest payments?
What's, it saved us in the current year, how much?
It saved us in the current year $4 million in, in the PSPRS scheduled contributions.
We have, I would go back and calculate what that means in the long term.
Yeah, so what does that mean in the long term though? I mean, like, if I go and take my car payment and I turn it from a five-year car payment into a 10-year car payment, I'm still accumulating a significant amount of interest in shifting that debt further down the road, right? So my question is, if shifting our PSPRS burden from 20 to 25 years cost us somewhere in the realm of half a billion dollars, Kennyton, do you know that number off the top of your head? I apologize, I, I thought you knew.
This is part of the topic.
Yeah, we might be a little off the agenda.
Well, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand, if we're doing so well financially this year that we're going to lower the utility rates, then why am I shifting the burden of my public safety retirement system and, and keep amortizing debt further and further out?
So it's two different funds, right? It's going to impact two, there's no, none of that affects any of this?
It absolutely does. It comes out of the general fund, but eventually the money has to be transferred in from the enterprise, right? I mean, that, the general.
It does not necessarily. I mean, the general fund, the, this covers $100 million of public safety, but that's not the full amount of public safety. I mean, that, to say that this is somehow directly related to PSPRS is a, I mean, it's, it's an association only by name, but there, I don't know that we would say, we don't look at this number and say the transfer out of the enterprise fund and the general fund has anything to do with the PSPRS. We didn't increase this transfer when we had a spike in the PSPRS fund by $10 million. We didn't generate, we didn't ask for more money out of the enterprise fund to cover that cost.
How much did the amortization from the PSPRS fund from 20 to 25 years cost us in additional interest payments?
We, the half a billion dollars going from the 20 to 30 years, and so we didn't look at the, the 20 to 25 years, but that's over time and that's in those dollars. So, you know, we can, we can talk about this offline, but a dollar 30 years from now is a lot less valuable than a dollar today. So if you present value that amount, it'll be the same as it is today, a 20-year versus a 30-year. That's getting kind of geeked out in finance, but, but yeah, you're right, a half, half a billion dollars are, yeah.
But we're taking that savings, what are we doing with the savings?
Yeah, the savings in debt service this year is, we're putting, you know.
Not debt service, but.
It's not debt service.
Yeah.
The payments that we would have had to make to PSPRS, our policy again was not, is to hold it so that we can avoid the spikes that we've seen in PSPRS in the, in the future. And so we're using that as a hedge against those increases.
Yeah, we had, we, we originally planned for the 20 years and so we went to the 25 years, we saved that $4 million, but then we also set up a $4 million reserve fund for the PSPR spikes that we'll see.
So the $4 million that's being saved this year in PSPRS is not in any way included in, this is a totally separate fund? It's not included in any of our operating expenses?
Well, not in this, not in these funds, it's in the general fund.
But they co-mingle, right?
No.
There's, there, this, so this particular fund, on this particular scenario, we have a transfer that goes from the enterprise fund into the general fund. The gen, the transfer was not adjusted when PSPRS went up, neither was it adjusted when we did the change from the 20-year to the 25-years. So we have not changed the transfer going from the enterprise fund to the general fund.
There's been no cause and effect because of PSPRS. No cause and effect out of this transfer.
No.
I mean, it's a big number, you know, but it's, but it's $109, $108 million, but we've never adjusted the transfer to cover PSPRS expenses. Instead, we've reduced salary, salary increases for employees and we've reduced the number of positions we've added. That's what we've had to do in the general fund to cover those costs.
Mr. Freeman.
Just shorten the conversation here. I, I support scenario C. Thank you.
Okay.
Also, I support scenario C. I think, as colleagues mentioned, we can revisit next year as well.
Every year.
Possibly from that 3.85, maybe flying that out to 3.5. You know, it depends on, you know, what happens next year as well, so, right? So I think to lessen the burden this year and have a discussion next year to, to see what the five-year plan, I think, makes sense, scenario C, so I support that.
I think the big takeaway from this meeting is next year we schedule four hours for this meeting, rather than three.
We will do that.
Okay. Okay, so that's not an action item, but I think staff needed to hear.
It gives us a, we're building towards the, the proposed budget, we can, we can include that in there, that'll be very helpful.
Thank you. Candace, do you have a, is your presentation over?
That's what I had regarding the utility, the enterprise fund and utility rates in general. There was some questions on the economic investment fund. There is a presentation that is in your backup.
Is there any other questions regarding that?
Or you can just review it and ask me questions if you have those, so we can shorten the time here, but either way, I'm ready to do either one.
The economic investment fund is attachment four, correct?
It is. There should be a presentation and then the financial schedule that goes with it is attachment four, but there's a second presentation.
It just gives a brief history of what, how it's been used and, and the fact that we are, that is where we will be, we're proposing to fund the improvements for issue.
So it is a very short presentation.
I don't want to shortchange the, I, I think obviously there's a lot of interest in, in that fund, so I think we ought to have that presentation and that discussion, but I wonder if we could continue it for another meeting?
Sure.
Mr. Thompson.
Candace, can you put together the, what the average homeowner and the average commercial or retail-type facility would use rate-wise for scenario A and scenario C, what that would look like? So holding constant at 3.5.
Do they use or what their impact would be?
What their, what their annual impact would be on their utility rates? Because that's, because that's almost a 1% increase from, from this year to what it would be next year, from a 2% to a 3.85. I mean, that's almost 1%. Or from next year to the following year, right?
Year two, you're talking about fiscal year 1920.
Right, yes.
And I've been following you, so for this year, it'd be at 2 and a half, 2% versus 3.5%.
Right.
Next year, instead of being 3.5%, it'd be 3.85%. So is that the difference you're looking for?
I'm looking for the difference between 2% and 3.85%, because that's almost a 1% increase, right?
Oh, to go from this year to next year, I see, okay.
So what, what would the hit be on the typical residential bill?
So you want to compare that to the 3.5%, not the 2%?
No, the 3.85%. Because if we're given direction to move towards implementing a 2% increase or a 2%, a decrease to 2% from 3.5 to 2%, but then we turn around next year and hit, potentially hit our residents with a 3.85%, which would be almost a 1% increase, what does that average monthly bill look like?
Councilor, just to be clear, that's why, well, let's compare years, right? So this year, proposal's 2%.
Right.
Next year, it's either 3.5% or 3.85%.
3.85. If we do 2%, so if we do 2% this year, then next year it'll be 3.85.
Right.
On there.
Versus 3.5%.
Correct. So what is that almost 1% increase from 1819 to 1920?
Page 52 has.
So what does that look like?
Okay, well, we'll, let, tell you what, we'll just run, here's how much the increase would be this year and here's how much it would be next year, scenarios A versus scenario C. How's that?
No, so what I, so here's what I'm looking for.
For year two.
If I, if I'm paying my bill today on a 2% increase or a 2% rate, so your, all rate revenue, so your water rate is at 2%. So I'm paying 2% this year. Next year, I'm going to be paying 3.85%. I want to know how much of an increase that is going to look like on my bill.
Okay.
Because that's almost a 1% increase.
But I, I would add on, so on scenario A, it's 3.5, so it's really 0.35.
Yeah.
Of an increase that we, you would see, folks would see that.
Well, no, not necessarily, because if my rate today, if I'm paying 3.5% today and I'm paying 3.5% next year, I'm not seeing an increase. But if I'm paying 2% this year and 3.85% next year, then I'm seeing almost a 1%.
Mayor Councilmember Thompson. These are, these are additional increases each year, so it's not the same increase, Nick. It's, next year is an additional 3.5%. An additional.
Over the two.
Yeah. That's the increase, not the rate.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I know, it's hard, you get caught up in seeing the rate. Yeah, this is just a reflection of an increase, not the rate. The rate is a very complicated formula, it's the percentage increase in that, in those rates.
Okay, Mr. Freeman.
I swore I wasn't going to say anything, but page 52, it indicates the amount of rates the average homeowner would pay. I think it's an additional $70 per year if you add up all the annual for each utility. And that would increase $70 each year over the next subsequent years.
Actually becomes more because it gets compounded on top of those numbers.
So it would be more. So we looked at smoothing that, bringing it down, just to help customers get used to what we're going to be doing.
And every year, we're going to try to keep those as low as possible.
Has anybody ever looked at the long-term effect of compounding the utility rates at 3.5% every single year?
Yeah, we tried very hard to not do it, yeah. But it's the compounding effect of the debt too, it's the same thing. I mean, we get it and it's difficult and the challenge is, is putting off these capital projects as long as we can before not doing them becomes more expensive than, you know, doing them.
Yeah, and to clarify, I'm not referring to the capital projects that are requirements, I'm referring to the discretionary income that we're using with the leftover money, right? That's the part that I have an issue with.
Well, but I think the bulk of this goes to pay the capital projects. The discretionary part is a handful of millions, the, the capital is tens of millions. So like, like, it goes back to the original question that we've all been asking is, you know, the economic development fund, yes, that's $5, $6, $7 million a year of debt service, but that's not enough to, to move the needle on rates. What moves the needle on rates is the fact that the voters in 2014 approved a half a billion dollars in bonds for utilities and we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars on facilities. That necessitates raising rates to pay those bonds off.
Yeah, all I'm saying is historically, I think over the last 16 years, I ran the numbers and I think that we've on average increased rates at about 4.7% on the utilities. Now we're projecting that we're going to increase them at 3.5%. At some point, when you compound these numbers, people can't afford the bills anymore, right?
That's, that, we're very sensitive to that, but also, if you go back 16 years, the population and the users of our utility have expanded significantly. So it's not a real, you can't focus on the, how it impacts one rate payer per se because the base continues to grow, the diversity of the economy, so that as that happens, we're spreading that cost out over a larger base. So it doesn't stay fixed, you can't, if you went to the same bill someone 16 years ago, it's not compounded because we're able to grow the system and spread the cost. Again, one of the reasons we're able to absorb the 6 million is our base of customers, both on the industrial side and the residential side, has expanded significantly and that helps to spread those costs out over more.
I'm saying if you took your utility bill 20 years ago and you compounded that number at 4.7%, you get the average utility bill today, unless I've miscalculated some numbers.
That's what I'm saying is, you, you, well.
It's the, still that one utility bill is going up at 4.7% every single year.
You're saying.
Now we're projecting that the utility bill is going up at 3.5% every year. Whether we project that, but historically, it suggests that our 3.5 projection is actually too low, right? I mean, if historically you've increased at 4.7. And my only point is that when we use discretionary funds to build things that aren't absolutely necessary to provide these utilities, the infrastructure that they need to keep going, hence the ASU project that I'm opposed to, is that you eventually eat into the person's, the median income, and I'm not even talking about the low, the low-income people are going to see at first, but now I'm talking about the median income, the average income person. If you're going to compound their utility bills at 3.5% every single year, eventually that's going to be 50% of their.
Right, but we're not compounding the economic investment fund and.
I know you're not compounding the economic investment fund, but the economic investment fund is funded by the utility rate increases, which you are compounding, projected to compound at 3.5%.
Mostly because of the growth in, in building the system.
Okay. All I'm saying is when you have discretionary funds left over, you discretionarily spend them, but my point is we're spending money that we otherwise don't have because the, the social unrest that's going to come from increasing utility rates at 3.5% annually, compounded, is simply not sustainable. And I, and I don't know what the plan is, if we're going to keep increasing these rates that, you know, we don't survive. Eventually, you, eventually 50% of a person's income is going to go to paying their utility bills, 100% of their income is not a sustainable model.
I think we've said all we can, you know, I disagree with everything you just said, but why don't we continue this conversation to our next, when we continue the, the discussion about the economic development fund? Because this is a discussion we ought to continue to have, but I think we're out of time today. So let's, let's continue this and we'll, we'll discuss what it is that prompts utility rate increases, whether it's, well, we'll, we'll, we'll continue that conversation. Counsel, other questions regarding or comments on this item? The next item on our agenda is item two, acknowledged receipt of.
Mayor, before you go there, just, just so you know, and we won't make a presentation, but included in your agenda, as we talked about during the council strategic process, we've identified the first key performance indicators to share with you. So they're there, they're related to public safety. The good news is the public safety departments are going to come before you. We wanted to start showing you how that report would look like and really the intention is to give that to you in advance. And then if you have questions, when that item comes up, I think we decided every four weeks, six weeks or whatever, we bring you a different grouping of performance measures. Then if you had questions, we could answer them here. Otherwise, these are always available on the website, they're not just being produced here, they're available, but it was opportunity to highlight those. So I just shared that they're there and that's all that needs to be said unless you had some specific questions. And again, we'll probably be covering most of those again when the public safety departments come before you.
Thank you, I appreciate you doing that. I know, I've specifically asked for these things, so I apologize for glossing over them and I'm sure we will spend an appropriate amount of time on it. Mr. Thompson.
First, can we get the, can we get the number of calls for service for each of the precincts? For, well, I'd say precincts for police and then for stations for fire.
We'll show you the stations next week, right? Is that the presentation? Yeah, we're doing, yeah, we'll have you, we'll have fire for you first and then we can get PD.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so thank you. Again, I, I, agenda item 1C is those dashboard statistics.
It's just information only, Mayor.
Thank you. Item two then is receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Thompson, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item three is here reports on meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, anything you'd like to share with us? If not, item four is scheduled for future meetings and general information. Mr. Brady.
Just again, reminder, we don't have a council meeting on Monday, but we do have another study session and we will continuing throughout the rest of the month on Thursday, April 12th, and I believe that is the day we're scheduled for fire.